All right. Good evening and welcome to the April 23, 2013 Lawrence City Commission meeting. Welcome, everybody. We have a couple of recognitions this evening and a proclamation. The first recognition is of Bob Newton, Gary Fish, Teresa Gordzika, and Stanley Snigges for service on the Aviation Advisory Board. Is everyone here yet or no? Okay. Well, then I'm going to bypass and go to the next one, and I won't repeat that. So the first, the next thing on the agenda tonight is to proclaim the week of April 22 through the 26 as Tree City USA Week and Friday, April 26, 2013, as Arbor Day. And do we have our forester here this evening? Anybody here to receive the proclamation? There you are. How are you? Why don't you come up here and tell us a little bit about the celebration this coming week?
Thank you, Mayor Dever. And thank you all those commissioners for supporting our forestry and landscape work in the city of Lawrence. This was, tonight we're celebrating our 35th year as Tree City USA and Arbor Day. I have about 12 things I was going to mention briefly as I can. Some of our highlights for 2012 that we accomplished with our Arbor Day and Tree City USA award application that we turned in. And some of those included the partnerization, partnering successfully with a lot of volunteers this past year with the Palanty District. Sorry. The Palanty District Scouts, Westar Energy, Wright's Tree, Union Pacific Railroad, and Rotary Clubs to plant over 65 large trees in the spring and the fall at the Oak Hill Cemetery and Memorial Park, Burrows Creek Trail, Rideaway, and the Rotary Arboretum. And if you recognize our forestry side, we're a little different than the recreation side. And I know you guys have spent a lot of time on recreation lately, so you may not have heard about some of these things. But we've been partnering a lot with the community and youth that are interested in environmental issues as well. The Parks and Recreation staff also collaborated with the Public Works and Utilities for North Third Street to improve a major highway entrance into the city with new traffic signals, triangle medians, and lots of trees. We completed this as the KTA had finished up their construction of three new bridges over the Kansas River and highways, and the area was left blighted. And we think we've made a nice improvement over there. We also added a new sign and landscaping to the roundabout and some retaining walls. The Parks and Recreation staff also completed a West Star Reliability Tree Planting Program, including West Seventh Street and other ride of where areas to utilize a $2,500 donation for replanting small trees under power lines. We've also been working on an inventory which includes GIS technology-based tree works. And we purchased the professional version in 2012, which allows us to go paperless on our service request and work order system. We moved into a new forestry maintenance shop with the facility folks as well, and we can now store aerial equipment indoors. And you've all been very generous in helping us to order a new aerial bucket truck with green energy battery, and we hope to get that in 2013. The forestry staff also included pruning and removals. For this past year, 584 trees were planted, including 237 in new subdivisions. Over 1,350 service calls were responded to, resulting in 516 trees removed and 1,410 trees pruned. And this is a lot more trees removed than in the past, so you can see the droughts. Really has kind of doubled our efforts for removal. It's made a huge impact on our department. We also helped Public Works clear 54 miles of streets ahead of their overlay projects for tree pruning and raising them to meet the needs of the equipment. Special thanks to the Public Works Sanitation Division this year. They helped us with our tree removals by using their new grapple truck, and they recently had it outfitted to pick up logs. So that's been a lot of time and energy saved on our forestry division. We also did some IPM projects, which is Integrated Pest Management, which included treating some large mature oaks for iron chlorosis. And we've been learning about the Emerald Ash Bore that's coming to Kansas and has been in Wyandotte County now, so we'll be dealing with that in the future. Our staff also participated in helping the city of Harveyville with tornado recovery. We went over and inventoried and ground out 50 stumps in their community after they were hit by a tornado. This year, we are going to be doing our Arbor Day ceremony, which we'd like to invite you all and the public to attend. It will be at Opal Jane Kennedy School on May the 9th at 12:45. Thank you.
Very good. You guys have been busy, and you know, I think our city benefits from quality people like you, Crystal, and the work and care you put into making our community so beautiful. So I appreciate what you do from an aesthetic standpoint and from an ecosystem standpoint. I think our city is well-equipped to handle drought, you know, difficult diseases, and I appreciate what you guys do to keep up to speed and to make, and to enhance Lawrence as a city. So without further ado, I'm going to read the proclamation this evening. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas the year 2013 marks the 141st anniversary of this holiday called Arbor Day and was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas Lawrence, Kansas has been recognized in its 35th year as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and the Kansas Forest Service, and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now therefore, I, Michael Dever, Mayor of the city of Lawrence, Kansas, to hereby proclaim the week of April 22 through the 26, 2013, as Tree City USA Week and Friday, April 26, 2013, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, to support our city's community forestry program, and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Thank you. Would you come get this, Crystal? Thank you. [applause] I got a hat? Oh, good. Thank you. Shake your hand.
I wore my Tree City hat the other day.
She wore, he wore his. Thank you. Ooh, and a pin. Sorry, guys. I didn't get lucky this time. Okay. Stanley still absent? Okay. We're going to move on. If you don't mind, we'll come back to you. We're going to move on to the regular agenda, or to the consent agenda and see where we come out, because we want to recognize him for service. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I'd like to ask if any of the commissioners have an item they'd like to remove from the consent agenda? Is there an item that the public would like removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'd like to add to the consent agenda payroll of $1,891,499.34 and claims to vendors of $4,972,378.14. Is there a motion?
So moved. Sorry.
Motion to approve the consent agenda by Vice Mayor Amick, seconded by Commissioner Shum. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. The first item, the next item is the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. Few items in this week's report to highlight. I know there was commission participation and staff participation and the plaque rededication here on Mass Street on Saturday. Appreciate that and appreciate the work that went into restoring that important part of our history. We've got the monthly billing permit report from Scott's Department. You see a pretty active march, a number of new residential projects. In addition to that, his staff put together a memo that talks about trends of billing permits in previous years from a number of area jurisdictions. I'd commend that to your reading. I think you see a general trend of an upswing in activity, not only in Lawrence but in our surrounding communities. As you've heard me indicate, we're moving into budget season. You see the outside agency funding application information that Casey has sent to a number of the agencies that receive city funding to encourage them to fill out the appropriate forms so that you can see all of those budget requests at once as part of my recommended budget and then as you work your will to create the 2014 budget. You see a grant that is being pursued by the Creative Arts Industries Commission, and you see that, that information, and you'll get an opportunity to approve that, that grant. So we'll look forward to that participation. We sold a lot of compost and wood chips, another successful sale. It's a well-appreciated service from our sanitation division, and appreciate the work that went into that. And because I thought we were done with snow, we put the winter street operations report on. Actually, Mark Teal's the one that completed the report, and you see that information, essentially particularly for the information on the new commissioners. We budget some for snow removal, but essentially the money that we don't spend, we put into street maintenance. If we have a particularly onerous winter, and we've had a few, we spend more and we take it out of that, that street maintenance budget. We are very proud of this important service and appreciate the work that's been accomplished, and I hope we are done for the year. So with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions or comments that you might have.
Questions? Yeah, please.
So Dave or Chuck, how many snow events did you budget for, recommend we budget for?
Next year?
No.
This year.
For what we just went through. Four at most?
Probably.
Yeah?
We had a pretty dry winter last year, so.
You need to start looking at the almanac more.
I think it was right.
Woolly worms.
Wasn't it spot on?
The good news is that we started the season with full supplies, and we were well-stocked throughout the season, and we'll not take it for granted next year again as well. And we've also, I think Chuck agrees, we've successfully deployed some new treatment methods and some other things as well. We've got a little bit more testing on that this time around. There's new technology, new opportunities to continue to improve the service.
There was a, excuse me, there was a lot of great work done, and I know that it's always hard to predict how much snow that you're actually going to have, but I know that there will be some funds that went to snow removal that could have been used for streets, but we'll just save up for next year, right?
And it'll make more potholes, unfortunately.
Correct. We are, had a pretty good season so far. I mean, this is a, April, March and April is usually a tough season on Pablos. There's some out there, we're obviously on them, and we're obviously, I think you're all familiar with the roadwork that we're going to have underway here, not only now but in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Dave. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and move on to the record agenda, if that's okay. All right, great. So the first item on the regular agenda is to conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing the issuance of healthcare facilities revenue bonds by the city of Wichita on behalf of Presbyterian Manor. And then there's some other legal gibberish, but I'll let Theo Boyer take care of that, so.
Gary Anderson, who is a partner in the law firm of Gilmore &amp; Bell, is here to walk us through this, this item. Gilmore &amp; Bell is our city bond council when we issue debt. It's a particularly legally intensive requirement, so Gary and others in his firm help us with those items, and this is another example we're participating in, in that process.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, commissioners. I'll try to make the legal gibberish short and to the point. Currently, the city is a party to an interlocal cooperation agreement along with other cities in the state of Kansas with the city of Wichita. And what that does is allows the city of Wichita to issue bonds on behalf of Presbyterian Manor, Inc., with respect to their facilities around the state. They have facilities scattered around the state, including in Lawrence. That just makes for a more efficient financing. They do one big bond issue through the city of Wichita that finances their facilities. So they are working on a, on a bond issue for approximately $110 million for their facilities in Kansas. Some of that will refund existing bond issues, of which some of those were used for the facility in Lawrence, and then some of the money will be used to pay for new improvements at their facilities, and approximately $600,000 of that will be spent at the Presbyterian Manor here in Lawrence, which is out there at 14th and Castle. So for federal tax law, each jurisdiction where the facility is located that bond proceeds will be spent on is required to have a public hearing, allows the public to come and comment about the proposed financing. After the public hearing is closed, then you will consider the resolution, which will approve the amendment to the interlocal cooperation agreement. The only amendment to the interlocal cooperation agreement is to extend the term. It currently terminates in 2030. It would be extended to 2054. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. One key thing to remember is the city doesn't have any liability on anything with respect to these bonds.
There you go. I appreciate that. Anybody have any questions? I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
Moved.
Second.
Motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Shum. Let's see here. Seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor?
Aye.
So it's resolution number 7020. Is there any public comment? None? Seeing none, motion to close?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion to close. The, the public hearing by Commissioner Farmer, seconded by Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Amick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we've done that. We're going to go ahead and have a discussion on this. Does anybody have any questions or comments for our bond council?
So.
Just have to.
We have no money in. We're just facilitator of the bonds, correct?
Right. Right.
I move adopt resolution number 7020.
Second. Anybody?
Second.
Okay. Motion to adopt resolution 7020 by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Vice Mayor Amick. All in favor?
Aye.
Close opposed. Motion passes 5 to 0. All right, we'll move on to the second item on the agenda, which is to consider approving a street vendor license for Simply Frank's Company. I think Jonathan has something to say.
Good evening, commissioners. Jonathan Douglas, city clerk and assistant to the city manager. City code allows street vendors to sell food or flowers from certain locations downtown after receiving a street vendor license from the city. The code requires street vendor license applicants to seek signatures of approval from all businesses within 75 feet of their proposed location. The city commission makes the final determination of whether a street vendor will be allowed at a certain location. Jordan Kivett, doing business as Simply Frank's Company, has applied for a street vendor license for a hot dog stand on the southwest corner of 10th and Massachusetts. He did attempt to obtain signatures of approval from the businesses within 75 feet. He was not able to connect with the, with the representative of Louise's Cafe, and a representative of Encore Cafe did object to the license, which is why we put this item on your regular agenda tonight to give anyone a chance for public comment that might want to comment on that license. I did send letters to all the businesses and property owners within 75 feet. I didn't, I didn't receive any, any comment from any of them. Mr. Kivett, or Kivitt, I'm sorry, I don't, is here, can answer questions if you have any for him, and I'm also happy to answer questions.
Great. Questions for Jonathan?
For Jonathan. Jonathan, the previous individual that was at the corner, the two young men that had this similar business, didn't we have the same kind of comments from the businesses that were there, the property owner?
Correct. I believe that time it was the property owner who is, of course, the landlord of those businesses there that.
But not from the businesses themselves?
Not, that time it was not from the businesses themselves. This time it was from one of the businesses.
Okay.
Have we heard from that property owner regarding this? No, we have not.
Would you like to speak before we start our deliberation?
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm really excited to be here. I, I attempted to contact.
I'm sorry, you need to state your name.
My name is Jordan Kivitt.
Thank you.
And is that all you need from me?
Your address?
My address is 11541 Flint Street in Overland Park, Kansas. I originally was trying to become a student down here. That was my main thing, to go to KU, 19, and I didn't, finances didn't work out. So this was my attempt to try to make some money, to put down on my loan for college. And I went through all the motions, and I got licensed everywhere, so this is the last step. I didn't get good reception from Encore Cafe. She didn't want me out, you know, during certain hours, and it wasn't, just wasn't going to work. So that was the objection. But other than that, I got, you know, an approval from the church up on that corner on 10th and Mass, the greenhouse culture. They said they wanted me there, and I didn't, I couldn't get ahold of Louise's for some reason, but I have good intentions. I don't mean to, you know, be competition and take business from people. I just want to come out and try to make some money for myself, so that's all I really have to say.
I think I know from the name what you're going to sell, but what area are you going to sell?
Hot dogs, and they're prepackaged hot dogs. So the only thing I'll be doing is just reheating and cooking. I have cans and chips, bags of chips, and, you know, that's, that's it. Keep it simple.
In the hours of operation?
Well, I'd like to be out anywhere from noon to about, you know, 9 on certain days, and then, you know, on the weekends, you know, past 9, maybe till midnight.
Jonathan, is that consistent with what you've been hearing?
Yes. The city code allows street vendors to sell until 2:30.
Yeah.
That was a change made a couple of years ago, actually with the last vendor at this location.
I remember I was.
Petition for that.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions?
Just as far as food safety, does this have to go through the health department and be certified?
Yes, it did.
Just let us know what we, what you do to make sure the public is safe.
Sure. Well, we have, you know, all of our cleaning supplies. I have a full commissary that I can go to to take my cart, you know. I've done, I've done events. I had a temporary event at the Sprint Center. I did, I did it for the final four. You know, I just went out there and sold some hot dogs, and it's, you know, it's really easy to keep clean. We got cleaner. It's, the cart is only three feet, three feet wide, it's four feet long, and it's five feet high. I mean, it's tiny. It's about the size of this podium, you know, maybe a little longer, but it's really easy to keep clean. I have all the necessary cleaning supplies. I've been through, you know, the Kansas Health Department. They came out and looked at it, and they gave their stamp of approval. And if you need those licenses, I'm sure Jonathan has them, but.
Yeah. It's a good question.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, thanks. See if we need anything else. Is there any public comment on this issue? No? Seeing none? Commissioners, do you guys have anything to say about it?
You know, Mayor, from the business that was there before, similar business, you know, I'd never really heard of anything. It seemed like that it was, you know, kind of a business, especially late at night. Probably I won't be down there at 2:30 in the morning. If I am, something's really, really wrong, but, you know, I wish you well, you know, at that time of the morning. But, you know, everything that I'd heard about, you know, the activity was there before was something that, you know, people enjoyed, so truly this gentleman would be able to do the same thing.
Anybales?
I just think it's neat that, you know, we have somebody that is entrepreneurial, that wants to work to pay off school, and I think as a community, we need to support that kind of, that kind of entrepreneurial spirit for somebody who wants to take the bull by the horns themselves. I mean, I think that's, shame on us if we don't support that, because that's somebody working their way to, to what they want to do, so good for you.
Yeah.
I've always told my patients nothing good happens after midnight, and now I can be corrected. You can buy a hot dog downtown.
A hot dog's a good, probably a good thing to do.
Did you bring any hot dogs tonight?
I was afraid I was going to get charged with bribery.
Oh, it takes more than a hot dog, I imagine.
Next week, perhaps.
Very good. Well, is there a motion to approve this street vendor license?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a approval by Commissioner Farmer, seconded by Vice Mayor Amick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close opposed. Motion passes 5 to 0.
Good luck.
Thanks for coming tonight, and Jonathan, thanks for your work on this. Okay, do we have everybody? Yes, that's great. All right, so we're going to go back up to the recognition process, if that's okay. And we want to recognize some people that have been instrumental in making our aviation better in Lawrence, and some of those members are here tonight, and I think our chair is here to talk about that.
Richard Hay is the chairman of our Aviation Advisory Board. He's got a few things to say.
Thanks.
Well, we'd like to recognize some of our former members of the board that had just retired over the last year. And to put in perspective some of the things that they brought to the city of Lawrence and to the local airport is, when one of our members first got on the board, we had one runway, and we had what was called the Mud Hut on the west side of the runway. Since then, working with the board, the city, with the FAA, we've got our new terminal. We've got intersecting asphalt runways. We've got the ability for big jets to come in, as we found with the, the president of Columbia when he came this year. The airport's developed into an economic impact of $10.7 million a year with over 65,000 operations. And the board that we, members that we're going to recognize today not only helped instrument the development of the airport and the improvements there, but they also helped with events at the airport, really promote the airport itself, from open houses to getting the master plan hammered out and worked out, and make sure that this, the airport is represented well in that master plan to the FAA. Fundraisers, we have raised over $40,000 for the Children's Wish Foundation through events at the airport, open houses, worked with Public Works, for Public Works, stay in an open house at the airport. And these guys really have put a lot of heart and soul into making sure the airport is promoted the way it should be, and that the aviation industry is represented well in Lawrence. And so we'd like to, to recognize them and their, the time that they've spent on the board.
Well, can you have them all stand up there with you so we can all appropriate, introduce themselves on, on the microphone and introduce us to some of the commissioners that are new and some of us who haven't been able to meet you yet?
Stanley Snigges, the late one.
My name is Bob Newton, and I think I've got the senior status of this retiring group. I've just completed 26 years on the Aviation Advisory Board.
Wow, that's great.
I'm Teresa Gordzika, and I served for eight years on the Aviation Advisory Board.
And Gary Fish, and I was on the board for about 10 years, so.
That's, that's great. I think you've got some honorary plaques to get this evening. We got ours last week. Do I get to hand them out? I'd love to see one, yes. You should be doing that. I just want to add that, you know, this, the airport is something that we've really tried to invest in. Oh, very, very nice, very nice. I didn't realize how, how far we'd come, and I appreciate your service on this important board. This airport is serving lots of people we probably never intended or knew about. I know the, I think we get traffic for a lot of the races that come into town, too. People come in and they buy fuel, and they create sales tax, and they stay in our hotels, and I think the airport is one of those quiet things in the background, and we really appreciate you guiding us into the 21st century and beyond. Hopefully someday we might have some other kind of service here. But I know we've done a lot of improvements, worked hard on getting sewer connections out there, and I know that if it wasn't for your hard work, we wouldn't have any reasons to be improving out there. So thank you very much from, on behalf of the city. So go ahead, Richard.
To Bob Newton, for 26 years of service on the advisory board. For Teresa Gordzika, for eight years.
For Teresa Gordzika for eight years. And Stan Snigus for seven years. And as we leave, I'd like to introduce the current board members that are here to support the retired ones. We have Bruce Boyer.
Hey, Bruce.
Dan Born. Sherry Thompson. And we do have Lloyd Hetrick representing the FBI here to show his support as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody want to say anything? Are you good?
You know, I know, Bob, you and I, a long time ago, when I think when we were first elected, I think we had a building down at the west end of that one runway. And I think there was-- yeah, well, yeah, it was already paved. But the amount of work--
It was trash, is what it was.
I know that the number of improvements that since we've been around has been incredible. The fixed base operator building, the hangar there and Lloyd and his family's commitment to the airport. Bob, all the work that you and other board members were involved with and I'm sure some of the current board members involved with in the terminal building, the new roadway coming off the highway there, just all of the improvements that's there. It's an incredible-- just incredible improvement, the amount of work and time you're all to be committed for, not only the work that you've done, but folks that you had the opportunity to serve with, too. So thank you all for that commitment.
Thanks again. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item three, which is to consider a text amendment, TA 12-00206 to the City of Lawrence Land Development Code, Chapter 20, various articles to change the requirement that development projects be required to comply with Horizon 2020.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission Scott McCullough with the Planning and Development Services Department. The state statutes require that if a city is to have subdivision regulations, it must first adopt and maintain a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a policy guide that identifies the community's goals for directing land use decisions. Some states require strict compliance with the community's comprehensive plan, but Kansas does not. Communities in Kansas approach the plan differently, with some communities using it as a heavily weighted factor and judging rezoning applications and other types of development requests. Since the adoption of the 2006 Land Development Code, the city's zoning code, Lawrence has had a higher level of review for rezoning applications requiring compliance with the comprehensive plan. If a project is not in compliance, then the development code requires that the plan be amended in order to consider the long-range implications and a wider range of issues associated with a land use that differs from the current plan or policy. This amendment, before you this evening, was initiated as part of a group of text amendments intended to find ways to streamline the development process, yet maintain the value behind the various code standards that each text amendment represents. For example, we are also processing amendments related to parking lot screening, lighting standards, and the criteria for retail market studies in the same vein. Horizon 2020 is the joint city-county comprehensive plan. It has received numerous significant updates and even entire new chapters over the years. We have not been shy about amending it as the need arises for proposed projects that bring value to the community or as public policy changes. While it represents a reasonable set of policies and development patterns by which to guide growth, it often isn't the only reasonable scenario. And the plan can and has been changed to accommodate other reasonable policies and land use patterns. Am I going the right way? Oh, I should have been doing that all along. Apologize. This slide represents our sector planning efforts. Sector plans reflect the planning process on a more detailed level. These plans use the basic policies of Horizon 2020 to build land use plans intended to guide future growth as demand increases in a given area. Under the city manager and recent commission's direction, the planning office has processed plans for nearly all potential areas of growth for decades to come. Now that the water and wastewater plans are completed, we have the south of Waukesha Plan, this area here, identified as a future planning effort for the city and Planning Commission to consider. These plans are often the subject of the type of an amendment request that we're talking about this evening. These plans take months and sometimes years to complete and involve every type of stakeholder you can think of in the process, including multiple meetings of the Planning Commission, City Commission, and Board of County Commissioners. They provide the expectations on growth for and to the public and development community as development pressures increase in any given area. Lawrence Code utilizes the comprehensive plan to a high degree, directly linking certain districts to the plan's designations. This is especially true for commercial districts. The entire development code is intended to carry out the policies of the plan. If the commission wishes to pursue this amendment, several code sections will need to be revised. The most direct section involved is the section that requires compliance with the plan. Essentially, if a rezoning request is proposed that doesn't meet the plan's designation for that specific property, the applicant is required to also submit an application to amend the comprehensive plan. The two reviews are different in that the rezoning is a more focused analysis and the comprehensive plan review provides for a wider range of issues to be discussed and also allows the plan to be updated immediately so the public can use it as a resource for future decisions. Put all of these up. Most of the recent applicant-initiated plan amendments have related to commercial development, though residential zoning is subject to the same requirement. In each instance, the process has allowed the Planning Commission and City Commission, and sometimes the Board of County Commissioners, the ability to more deeply study the collateral impacts to changes to the plan. At the 6th and K-10 node, for example, all four corners of the node were reviewed and re-designated as an outcome of that effort and as an outcome of that one specific corner's rezoning application. We've listed some potential impacts in our reports. The intent of the amendment was to determine if deleting the requirement would streamline the development process. The Planning Commission determined that because we permit parallel processing of rezoning applications and comprehensive plan amendment request, the time required is not significantly increased by requiring compliance with the plan. The Planning Commission also found value in having the comprehensive plan stand as the expectation for development for the public and believed that the extra look at a noncompliant project was valuable to the community's long-term growth and development. If the requirement were deleted, rezoning applications would still be judged against the adopted plan. I want to be clear about that. We would still use the comprehensive plan in our analysis of any rezoning project. But the plan would not be changed immediately and the wider scope of issues may not be considered at the time of rezoning, potentially leaving some issues unresolved. Additional impacts associated with deleting the requirement to comply with the plan are as noted in this slide. Because the revisions to the development code would be many, staff presented the matter to the Planning Commission for initial direction on whether to pursue the amendment. As the packet reflects, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend that the city not pursue the amendment. They voted 8-0 to recommend denial. Your options this evening are to deny the request, return the request to the Planning Commission for further discussion, or return the request to the Planning Commission and direct staff to prepare a set of revisions for consideration. And then those recommendations will be brought back to the City Commission after the Planning Commission reviews them. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Scott, what's the time? Let's say there's a new project that's going to be requested and it's not found in the plan. What is the timeframe to rezone on one track and then reword the plan? Are they fairly parallel or is there a time difference on the plan?
Commissioner Shum, before we were able to do all of our sector planning, the majority of our sector planning, it was a more complex system because the code and the policies would require us to do a plan first and then accept rezoning applications. Now that we've done the majority of our sector planning, it's really the same time period. So an application is made and scheduled per the published Planning Commission schedule for their next regular meeting. And we work on them parallel, in a parallel way, so that there's no additional time. Where I think the development community sees some additional time is in the effort to analyze the comprehensive plan, that wider scope of things, sometimes in the past, has caused deferrals at the Planning Commission to study those issues and then brought back to the Planning Commission and ultimately reach the City Commission on Planning Commission recommendation. But it's initially the same amount of time if they are run in a parallel way. The applicant has the choice to go for the comprehensive plan amendment first to get an indication of whether there is support for the project and then follow that up with a rezoning request. That is their choice.
Okay, one more follow-up question, please. So if this text change were approved and then simply rely on rezoning, at what point do you catch up all these rezonings with the plan? Is that an annual situation?
Other cities do that in their annual review of the plan. The state law requires us to review our plan annually and those amendments and modifications of the plan are performed at that time.
I realize this is not mandatory if this is passed. But how do they save time if they look at the plan and say, "We're going to coordinate with it" versus "We have to coordinate with it"? I just don't understand why it would take less time unless they choose not to abide by it or look at it.
Again, I think the time situation is very nominal. I think one of the things that I have heard from representatives of the development community is that looking at those wider range of issues creates a little bit of a process burden on them because there is the potential, then, to get hung up on some of those issues. Those are some of the collateral issues related to a specific zoning case. And so that can add some time to the process. There is the time and money it takes to prepare a plan amendment. Oftentimes, they're preparing it, they're consultants. Sometimes attorneys or architects are preparing language for us to review. Most of the time, we're building the planning packet once we get an idea of what their amendment desires to do to the plan. So there are those issues as well.
Do you-- in your professional opinion, would you think, or not think, if we approve this change, that the plan might be less important and more incidental as opposed to the way it is now where it's a fairly strong document that has to be reckoned with each and every time? I mean, might there be that shift in thinking and procedurally even to come to a situation where, oh, yeah, that's just the plan. We'll go ahead and get it rezoned and later on, a year or so, they'll take care of that plan for us? Is there that possibility that that could happen?
Commissioner Shum, I think because of the way our sector planning is performed, and as you are familiar with and most of the commissioners, that process to sector plan often comes with extremely detailed and negotiated deals about what the land use pattern should be, what the policy should be in any one of these areas. They are all very different. Grand Township is very different than Farmer's Turnpike is very different than the Revised Southern Development Plan. And so I'm basing a lot of my response to your question on the fact that we go through an awful lot of effort in this community to establish these plans. And because of that and all the time involved and the effort put forth by the stakeholders, I think the Planning Commission feels like that should be given a very high weight and that it shouldn't be easy to not comply once that effort is adopted.
Can you repeat that last sentence?
That the Planning Commission believes that it shouldn't necessarily be an easy process to go through when there isn't compliance with a plan that has been processed so heavily and sometimes come to good compromises.
One of the comments was that this might-- the present situation creates disparity between someone who is a large developer and someone who might be a small-time builder. Do you see that the plan now somewhat discriminates against the small builder and makes it harder for them because they have fewer resources?
From the ones that we have processed, I don't believe that to be the case. Most of them are, like I said, most of them are commercial developments. They're larger companies that can afford to take the time and expend the resources to basically change the plan. And so, no, I do not believe there's much disparity. None that we're seeing presently with the system.
Got two questions for you, Scott. Have we ever rezoned land prior to revising the comprehensive plan before?
This is a-- as I understand it, the code was adopted-- it was a major revision to the code. We considered it new code in 2006. Prior to that, there wasn't the requirement to comply. And there's always been the criteria to comply. And for some commercial developments, establishing a plan first has been the practice. But it wasn't until 2006 that it's been made local law.
Okay. And then my second question is, you talked early on about the number of amendments that are currently in process. How many text amendments are we talking about that are in process right now?
The amendments in process are the ones to the development code and not the comprehensive plan.
Sure.
And I think all total, there were five to seven that we're looking at right now.
Okay, thanks.
Scott, the 2006 code that was adopted by this commission, was the language of requiring a development to agree with the comprehensive plan, was it part of that original vote on the code?
Yes, as I understand it, yes.
It was not amended?
Right. That has not been an amended section.
I don't understand that question.
Well, I didn't know that if it were something that was part of that original agreement or if it was an amendment to the zoning code itself.
No, it was part of that new code in 2006.
Because there were a number of amendments that came to the 2006 code. And I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't one of those amendments. It was part of the original adoption by this body.
As I understand it, it was part of the original. It has not been-- since I arrived at the city in 2007, shortly after the adoption, has not been a section of the code that we have amended.
Were you asking if it was amended up here?
No, I'm asking if it was part of that original adoption in 2006, the zoning code. When this body adopted that, that was part of that original code?
I believe it was, yes.
And that it wasn't an amendment sometime after the fact? There were a number of amendments that were brought forward.
You mean at the commission meeting that approved it?
Yeah, after the commission, when we approved it. I'm just making sure that it was part of that original adoption.
I would have to double-check that. But as I understand it, we have not amended that section of the code. That was part of the 2006 as-adopted development code.
Well, I've had people today tell me that they thought it was an amendment after the fact. And I assured them I did not think that it was.
It hasn't been since July of 2007. I know that.
Okay. Then another question, and I don't need names of companies, obviously. But have-- the experience that you've had of companies that have come in and we have told them that their project does not comply with comprehensive plan, have we had anybody who has just decided not to go through the process from your office?
Well, there have been companies and projects that we have outlined the process to accommodate them. I cannot tell you for certain what part of that process or issues may have led them to not make an application. But we have had different projects that we have outlined this amendment process to them. Some of them have been multi-dwelling projects, for example, some commercial projects.
Can I ask a follow-up to that question? Since July 2007, when this went into effect, so to speak, what--
Since 2000, July 2007, when this went into, into effect, so to speak, what, how many projects is that, that they approached your office and, you know, you said, "Well, we've got, here are the steps", and they said, "No, thanks"?
It would be hard to, to come up with a number. I mean, we, you know, we meet with people every week and talk about what the plan says and what the, what their project is and how it does or doesn't comply with it. We don't necessarily track the ones that aren't, that application is not made for. But it can be very small-scale. It could be, it could be on the neighborhood plan level. We, we didn't talk about neighborhood plans, but you're familiar with our Orietta neighborhood plan. We have an East Lawrence neighborhood plan. We have a, a Pinckney plan. We have different neighborhood plans that we also look to for compliance to projects and site plans and plaids.
So one seems like, from all our discussion thus far, is that the only shortcut or savings of time is if an item gets deferred for, for more study, is that, at the planning process? If you have to change the plan?
I think that's one of the main issues. I mean, that's one of the main issues.
So like last night, the Planning Commission deferred Menards for 30 days for some additional input, I guess. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if, if that is an example, then, and that is a rezoning, correct? Then they wouldn't have to wait for the plan to change in order to have the rezoning deferred. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, that, what we would do, we haven't touched upon it, but I can describe a little bit more of the process. In Kansas, most communities adopt what are called golden factors. These are factors based on case law, based on a case of Golden versus City of Overland Park. And out of that, the court said that because we're quasi-judicial, you need to, you need to review zoning, rezoning requests per a series of factors. And most people know them as golden factors. One of the factors in there is whether it complies with the comprehensive plan. It's just one of seven, eight, 10, whatever, however many factors a city may adopt in their code, usually. In a case like Menards or any other rezoning request, that case would go to the Planning Commission. The comprehensive plan, whatever is adopted at that time, would be a factor in reviewing that rezoning case. The community could look at that and say, "Okay, we understand that's what the plan says, but there are some other factors that outweigh that comprehensive plan designation", and then that recommendation will be made and submitted to the City Commission. The way we do it now is, they can still choose to accommodate the project, but we also look at our comprehensive plan and our specific sector plans, if that's appropriate, and we go ahead and make that change at that point to try to look at those circumstantial issues and that little bit wider range of issues. So looking at it just as one factor of the many factors that every rezoning request gets looked at is how a lot of communities in Kansas does it.
I go back to the, to the previous question. I, you know, if we're talking over a six-year period, five businesses that have, you know, said, "Once they learn the rules of the game, I'm going to go play in another sandbox", or if we're talking 200 projects, I mean, there's a, to me, there's a difference in how this is weighted. If, if, you know, we're, we're talking about six things here, but if five companies have said, "No, thanks", you know, or if, to me, that, to me, that matters, how many, you know, companies have decided to do that? So, I mean, is there, is your inclination that it's been a, you know, single or double digits or triple digits?
Yeah, I don't think it's triple digits.
Okay.
In, in that sense.
Okay.
Now, note that development's been fairly slow in the last five years.
Sure.
And at some point, in fact, the tap was just pretty much shut off completely in it. But, and, and I think this group represents, and you can see, it's just been a handful, really, that have even gone through the process. Every rezoning request is analyzed based on the comprehensive plan, and a lot of times it's debatable whether it meets the comprehensive plan. That's another thing the Planning Commission, the City Commission is the ultimate decision-maker on. Lengths and Heights Development, for example, was one where we had a healthy discussion about what the plan, planning documents stated and, and expected out of that one. And so they made changes to comply with the plan in that sense. Had they not made some changes, we may have been talking to them about amending the plan to meet their request.
Thanks.
Scott, if you could go back and, and tell us again if the commission were to consider, you know, making a change, you know, in, you know, the process of the comprehensive plan here and whether or not, you know, everything meets and you have to do these text amendments and all, what else all did you say would have to be changed as part of the plan?
Well, just many sections primarily in the development code, because the development code is so heavily influenced by the comprehensive plan. There are several sections that, that link our review, whether it's administrative or Planning Commission or City Commission, directly to what the comprehensive plan says. That's true of rezoning requests. It can be true of development plans, site plans, those, all, all those different kinds of development requests will likely need some tweaking and revisions to it.
So that in, in, on one hand, we may, depending on, on where you are, we may save somebody a little bit of time, you know, on one hand, but we may be creating the big monster somewhere else. Is that...
It's possible.
Okay. You know, Mayor, this, just thinking out loud here and with the amount of information and Scott and others have provided us, you know, hate to tell you guys, but this may be the biggest decision you're about to make on the commission because of the way that it'll affect development and the process and what development and how somebody goes through that. And, and we obviously don't want to make a mistake here in, in trying to, you know, to change something that may ultimately end up creating something bigger than, than we realize here on a Tuesday night. So I think we want to be real careful about, you know, what process, you know, that we're really going to look at here and make sure that we understand really what we're about to do, if, you know, if there's going to be this change. I mean, I would like to know a little bit farther about what effect we're going to lay on somebody by, you know, the changes to the, to the code. And, you know, I'm not asking you to give it tonight, but I think at some time, we need to know that.
It's, it's a two-way street too, though. While you, I agree with you, this is a big decision. It'll change the way we do business. But in one hand, it may be more beneficial to the development community, and the other, yeah, the opposite reaction to that is maybe more detrimental to the, to the neighborhoods or to the citizen, citizens at large. So that's, that's the, the weighting.
And Bob, I agree with that. I, I want you to understand, I just want to make sure that we all understand that while we may be saving time on one hand, we may be creating something that, you know, is really uncontrollable by everybody. I just want to make sure that we all understand what may, may happen here. Sorry.
No, it's okay. Unintended consequences, right? Right. That's good. All right, well, if you don't have anything else, and if you don't have any other questions, I'm going to open up for public comment, if that's okay? Public comment on item three?
Tom, go back. Okay, top it up. Top it up. Thanks, Ray.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I, I am new to this job. I forgot about our doorbell. We have a timer. It's four minutes, right? Can never, I wasn't in charge of the button, so I wasn't paying that close attention. Four minutes to speak, and this, this is the noise that it'll make when it's, when you have 30 seconds left, and if you'd wrap it up by then, that would be great. So, please, Laura.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Laura Ruth. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods. We've submitted comments to both the Planning Commission and the City Commission regarding this proposal. I'd just like to share with you, I guess, what are some of my understandings of the discussion that I've heard tonight based on Scott's presentation. It sounds to me that if we adopt the text amendment as proposed, we would be deferring all comprehensive plan changes to the end of the year. Thus, a retroactive plan amendment would just happen kind of once. On its face, that seems pretty unwise to me. The second thing that I heard said tonight was that what's making the process take more time is that deferral and study at the Planning Commission level. And I don't like the idea that we would want to eliminate the study part of it because I really feel like that's where the citizenry can become educated about projects and in many cases where projects can be improved because neighborhoods and hopefully developers can work together to identify things that are problematic and resolve them. I think if we eliminate that opportunity, it's going to cause more problems than it solves. I heard discussion about the process burden that the current system poses to attorneys and architects and consultants. And with all due respect, as a citizen volunteer resident of a neighborhood who just really wants people to understand and participate, there's a huge process burden for us too, and we're not being paid by the hour to come down here. We don't have lawyers. We don't have architects. We don't have consultants. We have volunteers who come after working a long day and feeding their families to try and attend a meeting if they can. So the process burden needs to be looked at from both sides of that coin. I am concerned that the text amendment as proposed will disempower the public and will discourage participation and buy-in for our planning processes generally. The question that I have is, I heard Scott say that we have these sector plans now, which kind of provides some measure of protection. And my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the sector plans are part of the comprehensive plan. So if we're saying that the development code doesn't have to adhere to the comprehensive plan, are we also saying that the development code doesn't have to adhere to the sector plans? That seems a little inconsistent to me, and I'm just, I'm not clear on that point. I'm sensitive to the resource issue, the question that was asked about small versus large developments, but again, I think you have to also take into account resource issues for individual residents and neighborhoods. Finally, I would just make the note that a single golden factor in lieu of the current code will not protect neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No worries.
My name is Gwen Klingenberg. I live at 4900 Colonial Way. I have some concerns about this also because in my research, I have found out that the U.S. Department of Commerce actually created the Enabling Acts, which are the Standard Zoning Enabling Act and the Standard City Planning Enabling Act, which were passed down as though for each state to be able to police their zoning. And they're all the same. And I'd like you to know that the golden factors are actually found in the Standard City Planning Enabling Acts. Section three of the Standard Zoning Enabling Act actually states, "Such regulations shall be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan to lessen street congestion", and it goes on about other things in neighborhoods and so forth. "Such regulations shall be made with reasonable consideration to character of the district and so forth." Section four says, "However, no such regulations shall become effective until after a public hearing." I don't have a time to go into everything I have for you, but there's also the American Law Institute, Chapter 7 discusses some of the, the laws that cities are used, allowed to use for administrative enforcement, which deals with comprehensive planning. I also want to point out that this concern about Lawrence being business-unfriendly. We have documented the city, I think it's 2010, the S-I-O-R Community Development Report list. Basically, Lawrence is the second cheapest and the second fastest city to run businesses through our development process. I don't see why we have such a worry in that department. Then there's some other things. I also did some court case reading, and in every court case, I'm not a lawyer, I admit it, but they're pretty easy to understand when you get the final document. And in every case that I read, which had anything to do with zoning, the judges all looked at the comprehensive plan. It's a protection for the city if you're following your comprehensive plan. They require it. They're expecting it. One city actually, and because of time, I'm not going to run through all of them, but one city actually didn't provide their comprehensive plan, and the judge voted or ruled against the city because they didn't even have a comprehensive plan. As you probably also know, we can't do subdivision regulations. We can't build public buildings. We can't build infrastructure without the comprehensive plan. It's in our state statutes. And one of my favorite state statutes is actually 123015, which talks about the fact that anything that is an ordinance or a compilation or codified, "The ordinance adopting the codification shall recite the codification was authorized by ordinance and that it was made in conformity with KSA 123014 and 123015 and amended meant thereto. When the ordinance and the codification, along with the certificate of the city clerk, that the same or true and correct copies are published in a book form, the codification shall take effect and shall import absolute verity and be received in evidence in all courts and places without further proof." I think the fact that we're concerned about these issues...
And I gave you, you emailed me, I'll give you a little more time, by the way, but I just wanted to follow...
Okay, I'm just trying to get through. I mean, I've got the stuff if you ask questions. Just put it that way. But the thing is, our comprehensive plan is protecting the city because it's expected to be there. If we make changes at the end of the year, that's a whole year that nobody in the community knows what we're doing or what we can rely on or where we can look. Not even the development community, they can't go and say, "Okay, I have to follow these rules if we don't know what they are till the end of the year." That doesn't make any sense to me. And as for the sector plans, if we go ahead and working on a sector plan and we allow a development to go and happen, and then we make the sector plan, and then we determine that the development was inappropriate, then what are you going to do? I mean, are you going to renig on the developer? That's not good for business. Are you going to renig on the neighborhoods and say, "Well, because we made the small change, which seems insignificant, we've now caused a major issue"? And I think it's very important, the fact that the government, the federal government actually thinks the comprehensive plan is vital. The first city to actually have a comprehensive plan was Chicago, and it wasn't just beautification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, not right now. Thank you. Anybody?
Can I ask a question about the, the S-I-O-R, Glenn? Thanks for bringing that up. I wanted to ask you, Scott. It says in here that from site plan approval to building permit, the process will take seven weeks. Now, my, my experience and just observation, I could be way off here, is that that's not, it takes a little longer than that. Can you comment on that for me?
Yeah, that, that was a situation, circumstance where the authors of that study gave every city the same circumstance. The property was, as I recall, it's been a long time since I've seen the study, but as I recall, the, the general concept was that each city was given a, a certain scenario and asked a series of questions, and as we answered those questions, we all had the same scenario. The property was zoned, for example, it was already platted. So from a certain point in the development process, site planning and building permit, which we allow, again, to be parallel process, and I think it's noted in that report, that we assume, because a lot of our projects, they'll be doing site planning and building permit review at the same time, that was, is an average for that kind of, of process. But you're right, it can take significantly longer than that to do, so...
So this doesn't factor in revising the comprehensive plan?
No, not at all.
You know, that's, okay.
No, this was, these scenarios all met the comprehensive plan, were zoned appropriately, had platted property and infrastructures.
So like an ideal, if everything is perfect?
Right.
Okay. Gwen, thanks for, thanks for bringing that up. I hadn't heard about that before, and that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yes. Say your name, please.
Okay, I'm Seal King. I'm representing the League of Women Voters. We've had letters to the Planning Commission and to the City Commission on this issue. Have any of you had a chance to read through those? Got one nod, maybe two nods.
Read them and appreciated them.
Yes.
Absolutely. Good info.
On, much of our information covers what Laura and Gwen have already said, that there's an absence of need, that there really won't be any time gained, and that Lawrence is already rated second in the community, in the area, for a speed of... an absence of need, that there really won't be any time gained, and that Lawrence is already rated second in the community in the area for a speed of development, and that there's a loss of transparency if this is followed, if this is changed, and possible damage to the community and not knowing what's happening and the effects of not studying an issue. I was at the Planning Commission last night, and in regards to Lo's request, there was a comment, and the commissioner who was speaking about it said, "There was no way that they were going to allow a business that large with that much impact in front of our high school." So it wouldn't have made a difference if the Planning Commission felt that way, that there would be a change if they weren't following the comprehensive plan. And the same with the issue last night in the Menards study. It was deferred because there were quite a few questions. There had not been really much of a study on the realignment of 31st Street and how that would impact this new development. There was not really a study on what would impact Louisiana Street with two lanes if this was one of the primary roads coming in to service this new development. And that there is an easement on Louisiana Street to provide a wider road without buying out residences on one side of the street. Are you really going to let this happen, this huge development, 41 acres, without studying all the impacts? And I don't think by doing away with the compliance to the comprehensive plan, if you would really gain anything. In fact, you might have made, like Commissioner Amick said, you make a lot more problems than you will solve a planning issue. Compliance with the plan is not a mere pro forma procedure of matter, instead it has important implications for community well-being and aggregate wealth. In particular, it prevents arbitrary decision-making, thereby allowing predictability. It also promotes connectivity in structure and function, compatibility in land uses, efficiency in function, economy, fairness between users of land, preservation of the environment in history, and public confidence in the future. Ignoring or downplaying these weighty concerns in pursuit of an unneeded, unexplained, and illusionary streamlining can have no intelligible public policy needs. Therefore, the League asks you to direct the staff to not spend any more time on this issue. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Mayor, and North Lawrence would like to welcome our new commissioners, Commissioner Farmer and Commissioner Reardon, and of course, that standby workhorse man, Commissioner Amick. So, but to get this show on the road, North Lawrence, we would like to see...
You're Ted Boyle, right?
Ted Boyle, North Lawrence Improvement Association. Now you threw me off.
Sorry.
You broke my pattern. We'd like to see this request denied. I was on the original development of 2020, and there was a lot of work that went into that over a few years, and it's been working pretty good. It has. And a good example of that is the North Mass project in North Lawrence. You know, it was kind of a controversial project, you know, had a downtown character moved over there, and, you know, it worked out really good. And what happened, we got a lot of public involvement, a lot of neighborhood involvement, a lot of downtown involvement. And if a part of 2020 needs to be amended, well, to me, that brings more input from the public, and we need that. It seems like we're getting away from a lot of public input and having internal decisions made. And so I would like to see, and North Lawrence residents would like to see, this denied. And most developers, you know, we've got two projects going on in North Lawrence right now. One is 10 houses and the other one is nine houses. We're having close to 20 houses built in North Lawrence right now. And so, you know, that shows that Horizon 2020 is working pretty good. You know, the Northeast Sector Plan, I believe it was probably the longest, it took the longest to get that sector plan under control. North Lawrence Improvement and Grant Township, five years worked on that Northeast Sector Plan to get what we wanted. And so that has a lot to do with Horizon 2020. And like I say, North Lawrence and Lawrence, and we are in the top five of development communities. So if we make it any faster, you folks are going to have to get out there with the shovels and help those developers, I'm going to tell you. So we would like to see the request denied. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeannie Pease. I'm president of the Sunset Hill Neighborhood Association, and welcome to the new commissioners, Jeremy Farmer and Terry Reardon, and thank you, Mike, for serving again. For the new commissioners, our boundary is west of Iowa. We are Sixth Street to Iowa to Bob Billings Parkway to Castle. And our neighborhood association was probably started in the early 1900s.
1900s, yeah.
1990, 1992. And we are asking that you deny this request because what Horizon 2020 brings to our neighborhoods is predictability, so that when we go into a neighborhood and you buy our, we buy our houses, we know what's going to be happening in that neighborhood. And we have a very good example of what happened, of how Horizon 2020 protected us. We have a very large apartment complex, Meadow Brooks, that we are very good neighbors with, but early in the 1990s, they wanted to change the plan. And Horizon 2020 says that there will be no more retail along Bob Billings Parkway from Iowa to Castle. And at that time, then, down at the corner of Bob Billings Parkway and Crestline, they wanted to do a retail. They wanted to put in a QuickTrip, and I don't know what the other retail spaces were. And the neighbors grouped and, you know, gathered, and we went to the Planning Commission, and we went to City Hall, the City Commission, and their request to rezone was denied because the comprehensive plan, Horizon 2020, said no more retail. And that protected us, and we were very glad that we had that predictability and that it was upheld. And that's what I see the benefit of Horizon 2020 for the neighborhoods, is this predictability. Please deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Danenberg, 2702 University Drive. I would like to urge the commission to uphold the decision of the Planning Commission to deny the request on the comprehensive plan. It does provide predictability for neighborhoods, and neighborhoods are currently under assault by rental properties, and we don't need anything else to attack neighborhoods. In the particular area I live in, we've already been attacked once by a spot zoning that allowed a sixplex to be dropped into a duplex street. Spot zoning, or as I like to call it, Pearl Harbor zoning. It comes upon you and drops the bomb before you even know it's overhead. The other thing is that we have this, as Ms. Pease pointed out, a vacant piece of property at the intersection of Crestline and Bob Billings Parkway, and the comprehensive plan keeps that from becoming a, in essence, a blight on the neighborhood. I'm sure the owner of that property would love to have a combination hydraulic fracturing, micro steel mill, and strip club installed there. I mean, just think of the tax revenue we could generate from that. But it would be obviously very, very detrimental to the neighborhood and to the overall community. And the argument that this is, our process is detrimental to development, I don't think is, from my limited experience, I don't think that's sound at all. I think we have predictability when we have a comprehensive plan that is the controlling document. That way, everybody in the community knows what the rules are and what should be followed. And to put that by the wayside, I don't think is a good idea at all. So I urge you to deny the request and follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the commission. Yes, sir. You going to comment, or you going to...
Yeah.
Okay, because I was going to say, I was going to, I've got an idea, but go ahead.
Well, what I want, comments I want to make were, I think that Gwen hit it right, hit it right on the head with the hammer when she said that the courts look at the planning documents and support those who support their planning documents. And I went through the mall applications in the 80s and 90s, and obviously, we won those court cases, and it was solely because we had strong planning documents, and we'd followed them, and we'd updated them, and annualized, and certified them every year. And that was what the court did look at, was how were our planning documents constructed and how were they cared for? And we were judged that we had done a good job with that, and then eventually, we were found to be able to support our planning document, which said, "No regional suburban shopping center mall." So I think that is very important. And I can't get, I can't get the, I can't get the, I can't get to where this is going by saying that this is a plan, but we're doing it in a reverse order. We've got a plan, but we set aside the plan, or we just, we don't, we don't look at the plan quite as, quite as much as we used to, and then all of a sudden, we maybe make some changes, and then we rewrite the plan. That, to me, is backwards. And it really does seem like we need the, we need to protect the visionary statements, the visionary comments of people, and what they really want to see as community be, and only in extraordinary circumstances to change that plan when something comes along that most everyone agrees with. But to do it in reverse, I think it belittles the plan itself, makes it more of an incidental requirement as opposed to being a structure that is in first place, that is the guiding principle of how we act, the Planning Commission and the City Commission. So I'd be opposed to making a change. I've thought a lot about this in the last few days, and I don't see that there's a huge time efficiency on it. I do see that there would be some problematic circumstances that could occur, probably would occur, and then I'm really concerned about the legal situation that we might get into in terms of trying to protect a plan that we would amend after the fact. So those are my comments, and that's where I'm at.
This can be a comment and a question of Dave, and it talks about going through as we have the six projects that have come forward that are going to require text amendment, you know, to get through this process for the zoning and make sure that, you know, that there is some type of conformance with comprehensive plan. My question comes in, you know, as we look at these, and if there's others out there that we're going to have to consider, as these projects go through the text amendment process and realize that the rest of the comprehensive plan, you know, stays in place. And I do appreciate Commissioner Shum's comments because I did share a time of going through the legal time of, you know, the attack on the comprehensive plan back in a long time ago. But I understand all of that. If you have all these text amendments, essentially, you are changing the plan somewhat to make these projects work. At what point, and I remember the process of the comprehensive plan and going through Horizon 2020, at what point do you start thinking about, okay, maybe start, time to start looking at the plan again, and maybe we need to start looking at, I'll pick a name, whatever 2040 would be, but, you know, that kind of thing? Because you are going to have a number of amendments that may affect, you know, what that comprehensive plan is going to look like. At what point do you start looking at that process and whether or not that need exists? Maybe it needs to exist today, maybe a year from now, that kind of thing?
Well, Scott has already started the process of planning that response. And when we get to item five here, where we, there's a link to a memo that Scott put together in regards to Horizon 2020 that talks just generally about it, and then some of his thoughts and his staff's thoughts about updating the plan in more than just an annual fashion, but maybe a refreshing of the document, and I don't know, Scott, you could add a little bit, but I think we're probably at that point. I think that's the conclusion that Scott and his staff are making, that we're probably at a point where we need to look at refreshing our comprehensive plan more than just an annual update, certainly involve the public, the commission, the Planning Commission in that discussion. But I think it's time to get at that issue and to look at some of its structure as well, and maybe some of the language, not trying to, again, dramatically change it, I don't think. Scott, you can add to that, and we'll talk a little bit more about it later.
I think now is the time that we have, that we believe should happen, if not for the simple fact that once in a while, a community needs to get together and learn about the plan, go through a series of public meetings to learn about it, provide input on it, affirm or steer us into a different direction with it. We can talk a little bit more about the process that we're planning later this year even. But the plan itself is very much, very active, very recent, in fact. Some of you have been involved with our industrial chapter and major significant amendments to the industrial chapter or sector plans. Those all are very recent, very much living documents, in our opinion.
Well, Mayor, here's, you know, as I look at this, we received a very strong message from our Planning Commission. You know, it's an ADO vote, very strong language from the chairman, Bruce Leacy. I mean, you know, there's pretty strong comments, you know, about whether or not we're actually going to be saving time, are we going to be doing things? And then the planning director comes forward and says, you know, "In the same time that you may think you're saving things here, you may create, you know, this other unforeseen thing there." So I think, you know, we need, again, we need to be very careful on where we tread and, you know, concurring with the Planning Commission at this point or some kind of other action, you know, might need to be looked at here. Because, I mean, I just don't think at this point, I understand what, you know, the effect is going to be by the decision to approve something and then have all these other things that, you know, we might be creating out there, and I don't want to make that mistake.
No, I agree, and Bob, that was kind of what I was getting at, is this is a pretty big decision for at least the appearance of a big decision, although people mentioned that we're going to be, you know, devaluing or degrading or some sort of trampling on the efficacy of Horizon 2020. None of us want to do that. There's been a lot of work, people have been involved in it. That's not what we're trying to do here, just so everyone understands. Even the consideration of this is not considering the disposal of Horizon 2020. Even the consideration of this is not considering the disposal of Horizon 2020. It's about looking at our processes and figuring out how we can do better as a city. This is constant improvement. This is about making us a better place to live and to do business. And I was saying that this is a pretty big deal for two people who are new to this, and it's a pretty major decision. Now, you may be completely prepared to make that decision, but I can tell you I'm not. You know, I've, Bob studied it, he was a part of it, he lived it. I'm still not sure about the ramifications of this, of what this would mean, good or bad. And I think as a commissioner, if I'm gonna vote on it, I want to be as prepared as I can. And this didn't come out of left field, this came out of a lot of contemplation and adjustments to Horizon 2020. So what I was gonna suggest is we put together kind of a task force of people to just take a look at what this really means. Because I, by reading all the notes and the minutes and the comments, there's a variation on the, on the true amount of time that's gonna be saved, if there's really any effort gonna be saved, if there's really any value in doing this. And if that's the case, then why should we do it? You know, so, but I also, you know, one of the things I wanted to do this year is to try to discuss future planning, you know, for Horizon, the update of Horizon 2020. I mean, we've talked about this, and I think it's something that we could do. We've done a lot of projects recently, and now I think we need to sit back and take a look at what the impact of the SLT being completed, what the impact of completing farmland and getting more businesses on that side of town, what the impact of all the development, North Lawrence, western parts of the city, and even the central part of the city, what those impacts of all that potential development is gonna have on our city relative to when it was created 15 years ago. So I think it's important to study Horizon 2020 and take a good look at it, refresh all of our, I mean, if you want to participate or go to some meetings, learn a little bit more about it, before we move on something like this, before we make a decision like something. Unless you guys are all prepared to vote it down, I think regardless of what we do, I think it's important that we put together a group to study Horizon 2020 in the next few months and identify how we attack this. That's kind of my takeaway for right now, because I don't, I'm not convinced there's positive, I'm not convinced of the positive impacts, I'm not convinced of the negative impacts, because after serving for six years and having to, you know, make decisions that maybe went against the plan, I want to make sure that the plan is the one we want to have.
To me, that's the issue. You know, I don't, I don't think it would be wise of us to ramrod this through without understanding the ramifications. When I first came to Just Food, we had this brochure that was nasty looking, that had a lot of information on it, good information. One of the first decisions we made within the first week was to change our hours. And so rather, we had 10,000 of those brochures printed, and we'd probably given out a whole total of about three of them. So we had boxes and boxes and boxes of brochures, really, really good, in theory, to give these out to people in the community. Well, we changed the hours, so we had to put a patch on it, we put a little label on there. And we changed the name of one of our programs, we put another label on there. We changed the time of the distribution, we put another label on there. Pretty soon, our brochure that was meant to be really good and informational had more labels on it than lines that were printed off the printer. And I, to me, I kind of get the feeling like we're treating Horizon 2020 like we used to treat our streets, Chuck. We just kind of patched and patched and patched and patched and patched. And eventually, we came to the point where we realized we kind of had to do something different. And so, you know, I think that our citizens in our community deserve us not to treat our master plan like we've treated our streets and our infrastructure. I think if we're gonna have wholesale plans for our streets to make them better, sure it's gonna be inconvenient, sure it's gonna take time, sure it's gonna, you know, be a tedious process, and the same with our infrastructure, with the new wastewater treatment facility going down by the Wakarusa River. You know, I think we need to make sure that we're business friendly to small businesses, and Laura, I appreciate you pointing that out, but also to neighborhood entrepreneurs, like this young man here who, well, he's not there anymore. Hopefully, he's making us some hot dogs, but, you know, but to make it friendly for them, to where they're not having to invest a year's worth of time and $60,000 or $40,000 that they don't have into kind of going through this process. So I understand that, and I appreciate, Scott, what you said, we expect people to take time and expend resources if they want to do business here. I guess my thinking would be, though, that we're asking them to take time and expend resources to come and make an investment in our community, and we need to make that an even trade-off for them. So I think the larger question for me is, rather than continuing to patch and patch and patch, what we want to do to kind of drive the conversation forward, so we don't have to keep having more amendments, but maybe look at a new plan.
Do you have any comments? In 2006, I was on the planning commission and was chairman when we passed those, so I have some familiarity with it. But time does decrease your memory. I had two situations where I was personally involved with the comprehensive plan. One was with historic aspects next to me and a project that was going to go in, and they created a situation where we had a really ugly, difficult project into a project that was very nice. I can remember the largest city commission meeting ever was the city commission meeting when we discussed the hospital and whether we should allow another hospital in town. And if we had done that, we would have created a situation where our hospital that we have now, which is financially stable, providing as good or better care than just about any other mid-sized hospital in the country, would have been damaged significantly with paying patients going to the new hospital, and the taxpayers of Lawrence would be subsidizing that hospital today, and it would be substandard care. So I think those parts of the comprehensive plan are very important and are very near and dear to my heart. When we have this situation that we have here, I don't hear enough that I would want to vote for this. And I think both Mike's are very correct and have been here for a while and say, you know, this is the most important thing that we might do in the next year or two years. And I think it does deserve study, because if we have situations where you have businesses like Menards want to come down, come here in town, and it doesn't fit, and we have to keep modifying our plan, maybe that's not the best thing to do. I think Jeremy makes some very good statements there. So to look at this, my initial thought is this is gonna be a fairly high bar to go over for me to vote for this. It's not gonna be a low level. But I think one of the things I learned during the campaign was that the more information I have, the better decisions that I can make. So I would have no problems with deferral and looking at this from a more comprehensive view and expand it a little bit, to look at the comprehensive plan and delay it. I would not be able to vote for this tonight, though.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think Bob's right. I mean, this is, there's not a compelling argument to do it. But the fact that a lot of this information came about, and the fact that we've been sitting here and working on projects, it kind of created the conversation for me. So, and we have a couple new commissioners, even you may have experience, but I think I just was, as a courtesy, I wanted to try and bring this up, address Horizon 2020, maybe talk about forming a task force and get together and educate all of us a little bit more on the process, take a look at the plan. Scott was already thinking about it anyway, so, but maybe actively pursue this and actually pursue some careful refurbishment of our plan, making it better, unpatching it and putting it together so that we all, as a community, agree on where we're gonna grow and what we're gonna put there, now that the complexion of the city has changed. And I think, rather than argue about things, I think we should plan for it and follow the plan. And that's, you know, a guideline, in essence, but in reality, people expect us to follow the plan. And I think that's, I want to make sure I like the plan after all the stuff that we've done in the last few years. It's, the complexion of the city is going to change in the next few years. Yes?
So is, you talking about citizens' task force to put together or task force to this commissioner?
No, I'm sorry. I would like people from the community to be a part of this, and I would like maybe someone like you to manage it, because I don't want to have time to do it myself. But, you know, maybe sit on a board and...
Yeah, Mike, you have roughly experience.
Well, I mean, this is something that I'd like to maybe set a tight timeframe on, so that people aren't questioning this, look at any value that this proposal has, and look at Horizon 2020, maybe bring in some experts we have here and the citizens, and then maybe yourself and, I don't know, someone like you who can actively participate.
Well, I'd be happy to do that, but, you know, I want to make sure that, okay, if we're gonna have a citizens', you know, group come forward, task force, you know, what do you want us to look at? What, you know, are we gonna defer every action that, you know, that we're considering tonight until such time that this comes back? Are we going to deny, you know, concur with planning commission at this point and bring back own set of recommendations, if any? What kind of things are we looking at here?
Well, I want people's feedback, but I want to study, I want to make sure that Horizon 2020 is relevant tomorrow and five years from now. And so I want us to take a look at what people's problems are with Horizon 2020, what the positive aspects, how we've changed it, catch up, maybe catch all the commissioners up on where we're at, and then move forward with a future plan, maybe creating, you know, not this task force, but maybe guiding the staff to go down the path of creating a new comprehensive plan, updating it and renaming it. This is 2013, it's gonna wear out here in seven years, anyway.
Well, if I remember the process for 2020, I think the number of people that were involved were hundreds.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be the plan, that would be a comprehensive plan creation, or what would be the technical word, updating? What was the last plan number called?
95.
95?
95.
Okay, 15 years, right? So 25 years.
Plan 95 actually started work in about 90.
Right.
And then Horizon 2020 sounded like forever, but already, I guess I'm reading from what you've saying is that it's now time to start planning for the next planning document because things have changed. And that's, that's the problem, or that's not a problem, it's the way life is, that when you write a 20 or 25-year plan, you've got fresh information from everyone in the community, and you're at the state of the art of technology, you're at the state of the art of what kinds of buildings you need and what percentages of retail mix with multifamily, and so it's nice and fresh enough to date. But after the fifth and 10th year, things change because of innovation or technological change, or a new road gets put in, or, you know, so you have to be able to agree that you're gonna need change along the way. So that's not a bad situation. To establish a patchless Horizon 2020 at this point would be rather difficult to do. It's kind of late in its life, and I agree with the idea that we need a new comprehensive plan to start working on it, because this one's got age on it, it's got gray hair, and it needs to be freshened up. But, so, it seems to me like there's two things that are going on tonight. One is, do we want to change the methodology by which we apply the plan? Do we want to do it?
Yeah.
Do we want to do it, leave it as it is, or do it after the fact? And then the other part of this is, that I agree with, is that it is time for an update of the plan, because we seem to be having more and more adaptations to it as we go along, simply because of its age and things have changed. And, you know, in that planning process, I've been through, been through one and a half of another one, but you predict the population, you predict, you know, where roads are gonna go, you predict, make all kinds of assumptions, and when that happens, well, it rarely ever happens the way you, who has a crystal ball that's 25 years deep and comes out in that kind of format. So, I mean, I already made my comment on this proposal tonight, and I'm probably not gonna change that, but I would like to see us work towards a new plan that is up to date, because things have changed in this community dramatically. Just as an example, and when the library, because I made a few comments at the library, when the library was, when the library moved from the Carnegie to the library where it is now, the population was 45,000 people, or now we're 90,000 people. So you can imagine in that 30-year period of time, how much, how much stuff's changed just by the sheer volume of people that are here. So, I mean, that, it changes little by little, but the increments catch up with you after a while. So anyway, for our purposes...
Okay, so separate to the issue is maybe we don't have to decide tonight, but maybe you and I can talk about, the answers I need before I would really feel comfortable moving forward with any final say, other than voting against it, would be to understand the impact of this on the process, to understand the time savings that would actually be created, to study the negative impact on the neighbors, the neighborhoods and the community, and the value from a business standpoint of doing this, how other communities address this is important, but not necessarily how we want to do it. Those are the kind of things that I'd like you to take, I'd like to take a look at our comprehensive plan and the planning process, because I think we are constantly trying to improve the process in our planning department, and I think this can be a part of that.
Let me see, let me ask you something, because, so, I get this right, I understand what you are suggesting, and tell me if I'm wrong, please, because I'm trying to find out which way this is going, is if you could update 2020 to get rid of all the patches and then be comfortable with it, then it would be a different scenario, because then you could agree, we could all agree that says, no, this is the plan, we're gonna stick by it. So then you wouldn't have to worry about changing the plan, because we'd all agree to it, and we'd all stick with it. So it becomes a different, maybe it becomes a different answer to this question, simply because all the elements of the issue change.
Yes.
So how does that work then, when you have a major change? One of the major changes that I saw, we saw this last year, was Rock Truck Park. There was no major recreational facility called for in our plan from 1990, because no one ever thought that that might be a possibility. So there's still gonna be stuff that comes along that says, boy, this is something we didn't see coming, and it's really a neat deal, and we ought to get it done. And then, and then you have the question again, is, well, do you want to go through the planning process first, or do you want to let that trail the development?
Yes, please.
The more I listen to this and think about it, and that's an important part, and all the people that have been here for a while, I guess I have a couple comments. One is that I think we can go ahead and look at the future plan, whether we pass this or not. And I would rather not have this, after thinking about it, hanging over our heads. My thought is to say, based on the facts that I know now, I don't support this. And probably best to get this off the table, go ahead and try to look at the comprehensive plan, and look at it either from updating the 2020 or creating a new document based on 2020 would be a better idea. So I would be probably in favor of denial of this tonight.
Okay.
It seems like maybe this question could be asked again in the text of the committee study, is which way is the best way to go for the community? And to have some input from the community at large is what they see, how they see this plan being the, how it's interpreted and the guiding principle that it needs to be, and how is it updated, and those kinds of things.
Okay, well, like I said, if we want to, obviously, we just need a motion to deny or approve it, but I was just trying to get more information for commissioners, but if they're, if we're comfortable with making a decision, then somebody can make that motion, I guess.
Mayor, if you're asking me to chair a task force for you, I'd be more than happy to do that, and to follow what you would like to see, where we need to head, you know, in the future on comprehensive planning and, you know, looking at the next plan. I think that after the comments that I've heard this evening from public and from commissioners, maybe we need the clean slate, we concur, and we sit down and you and I will go over...
An action item.
An action item of what we expect, what the committee's gonna look like, and, you know, timeframe. I, I mean, you know, I think that we can do this over a quarter.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, you know, it's not...
Not the plan, but...
Not the plan, but, you know, trying to get us to that point. Yeah, maybe I can have it done in a quarter. But I think that, you know, we have that back in 90 days and at least for a general discussion by the commission. And, you know, then action items as to whether or not there will be action items that could come from that committee and have the discussion, the commission, on things that they may or may not wish to initiate after public discussion.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Well, when you're in doubt, my thinking is to not change it, so I guess that means... that means that we'll be probably voting against this, at least in my opinion, because I, I don't feel comfortable doing changes if I'm not really sure about the impact. If I'm not sure, then I don't want to change it, but I think we need to talk about this and then maybe bring it back up for discussion, because at the end of this, I want to hear, I want to understand what this really means, what the value is, why, why we should consider it, why other cities don't do it this way, and, you know, what the value to the community this might be, and then get feedback from the people who have showed up to these meetings and others. Because I think, I think people need to understand it, because they're going to come and complain about this commission doing things, and I want to make sure that we're all discussing whether or not we're enforcing a plan that we believe wholeheartedly in, and that's, you know, coupling it is doing that.
Then I would suggest then that we go ahead and concur with the planning commission's recommendation, and then we establish the task force that you've laid out, and go ahead and head and try to meet the goals that you have the expectation.
Sounds good. Oh, sorry, yeah.
A question for Scott. At the planning commission hearing, was there any representation from the development community that made comments?
No, I don't believe there was.
Okay, well, I think that, that's a little strange in itself, in that there's none at the planning commission, there's none here tonight, so maybe it's not quite the burden that we, we feel it might be. And, I mean, I would have thought someone would have been down here from the development community that would have made a statement like, oh yes, this is very important to us, and it's going to save a lot of time, and, and here's why, but I, when you have two public meetings and not one person shows up, then maybe it's not quite the, the difficult situation that most, some people.
I'll, I'll comment, that's one, that's one way to look at it. I look at it as the people who live here understand the expectations, the developers local know that this is the process they're going to have to go through, they're willing to put up with the time and the effort. I think this burden may be more, appear more onerous to outsiders, and those people aren't going to come to our city commission meeting necessarily, but people who want to come in maybe over the next five or six years, as the economy improves, as our community grows, those are the people that I think we want to make sure are clear on what the rules are. And I agree that the, I haven't heard any comment from anybody about it at all.
Yeah, I didn't get any.
Yeah, zero.
Any commentary, and I was referring to the local development community.
Yeah, I know, yeah. I think they expect us to, I think they understand the rules, and, and I think they can live with it, I guess. It's the people from the outside that maybe can't.
That's what I take away from it, is that.
Yeah.
It's not, locally, it's not that.
Right.
Much of a burden.
It's a cost of doing business here, and they, and they understand the process. I agree. Have you guys had any, got a lot of feedback?
No, no, I, I would just say that I think if, well, Scott, can I ask you a question? Because you're a planner and I'm clueless about this stuff. What's the rationale behind in 1992, starting a document that planned for 2020? Is, is that normal, or is a shorter time span, you know, better?
Well, there's different philosophies about it. I think it's typically pretty normal, you want to do long-range planning, but it's also very much a document that is ripe for reconsideration almost immediately, because you can't, you can't, you don't know what's coming next. Rock Truck Park is a great example of not being able to forecast that, and that had significant changes because of that project, and, and for to support that project. And so one of the values for going in and amending the plan as changes are made is to make it not a patchwork per se, to try to make it as seamless as possible. When we do a plan amendment, we go in and we look at a number of different sections that need to maybe be changed to accommodate a shift in policy, so that the comprehensive plan today should read pretty consistently, and at least makes sense in a holistic fashion as it did the first day of adoption, and that's one of the values of that.
Okay, thanks. Well, I want to move that we, I'm just going to take what you said, that we deny this request, and that we establish a task force led by Vice Mayor Amick to look at revisioning Horizon 2020 and learning more about it, and then reconvene in 90 days and, and go from there.
Second?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Suppose, motion passes 5-0 with Farmer moving and reared and seconding.
Scott, the county's involvement with this, pretty extensive.
Yes.
Thought it might be.
If I did mention for the new commissioners.
Yeah.
A joint city-county comprehensive plan, so we do a lot of work with the county as well.
Part of my education process here this evening. It's a big, it's a big deal. It's a big deal.
Hope they're watching tonight.
So, all right, Mike, and I'll get with you, and we'll talk a little bit about it, and we'll meet and talk when we get back next time.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you very much for your comments tonight, and for coming on that one, and then the next item is to receive recommendations from our city auditor.
Get you this time.
Thanks. Good evening, Mike Iglesias, I'm the city auditor, presenting the follow-up memo tonight. I'm going to take a few minutes more than usual, because we've got a couple of folks who haven't been through this before, and I thought I'd talk about it a little more. Follow-up is required by the city code. The code basically requires that six months after an audit recommendation is made, we do some follow-up. The idea is that audit recommendations, oh, sorry.
Closer, please.
Yes. Audit recommendations shouldn't just fall off after the report that we need to follow up, get some information. I thought I'd, kind of to describe this, talk about a specific example that was part of this current follow-up. Going back to cash handling audit that came out in August of 2012, when I did that project, one of the things I did was I went out to all of the different cash handling locations in the city and sort of compiled all of their procedures, and then matched that up with a set of best practices that are recommended by Treasury folks, and looked for gaps. And if there was a gap, I would make a recommendation to try to close that gap. And there were a few gaps. The ones that I highlighted in the report were that there were some places where we were lacking specific procedural instructions, things like, in some cases, how to handle voided transactions, how to deal with payments in the mail, things like that. There were also a few locations where they didn't have, or they had very minimal procedural instructions. Both of those are weaknesses that, that could, could be pretty easily strengthened. So I made a recommendation, this is the text of that recommendation, that we should create and update these procedures. It refers to some guidelines, a framework that the finance department had prepared that were consistent with recommended practices. So that was all back in August of 2012. Now, six months later, I do the follow-up work, and what the follow-up work involves is, I ask the city manager to give me an update, give him about five or six weeks, or four or five weeks, something like that, and he provides me with a written summary. I then take that and go through it, look at what, what we say we've done. I do sometimes a little bit of additional work, but not a lot. For the cash handling project, I went and talked with Brian Watson, the Assistant Finance Director, who had, who had done this work. I then write up what I see, share that with the city manager as a draft, and then I present the results to the city commission, which is what I'm doing now. I have a little note in here, a bullet point, that it is not done under government auditing So the city manager in this case laid out what we'd done with the, those cash recommendations, that procedures had been written up and submitted to finance by December. Staff in finance, that was mostly Brian, had met with supervisors in all the departments, and that those policies were consistent. That's quite good and quite fast, and I was actually very satisfied to see that, because I think there were some weaknesses that were addressed quickly. I then have a kind of framework, when I look at the response, to decide if it's implemented or not implemented or in progress, kind of give it a category. I would consider this, this one implemented. So I do that for all of the open recommendations, and then when I come back to you guys and I ask, or I suggest that we can, we can close a recommendation, if a recommendation is closed, then I don't follow up on it anymore. If it remains open, I'll go back and again, six months, and, and ask for another update. Let's see, I wanted to, so I've got, there are six recommendations that I think are reasonable to close this time. There are four of them, here are the first two, and here are the next two that are related to cash handling. I'm suggesting we close these because they've been implemented, and, and I've got fairly good evidence that they have been implemented. Then there are two recommendations that we should consider closing. One of them was to look at the feasibility of acquiring the streetlights, and we've done some analysis, we're at a point where, maybe, maybe I'm, maybe I'm characterizing this a little bit too strongly, but utility company has an idea of what they would like us to do to purchase the streetlights, and that's more than we can really afford to do. That doesn't necessarily mean that those are unreconcilable differences, but, but there's been some analysis, and at this point, we're sort of in a different, different place. I think we can close the recommendation, I don't see much point in following up every six months. That's not to say that we shouldn't maybe reconsider looking at the, at the streetlight system again, but I think the exercise of every six months after asking for an update isn't necessary. I won't forget about it, I just might not bring it to you every six months. The other recommendation that was a little different was the recommendation to charge enterprise operations for solid waste services. We should, we can close this, we have a policy that we've developed that we don't do this, which maybe isn't what the auditor recommended, but it addresses the issue. So typically what I do is answer any questions, and then ask for direction on closing the recommendations or letting them stay open for longer. So, any questions?
Michael, with regards to the streetlights, are we concerned at all about the cost being charged for electricity in those streetlights, or has that been reconciled?
Well, there's a rate case, I believe, going on now, that for, this is, and this is pretty unusual, the tariff that they've proposed, the rates are actually a little bit better for streetlights than the current rates. They still, the lights are not metered, they estimate the electric usage based on, basically a formula, so if a light is not on and not using any energy, you pay the same as if the light is on and using energy. The issue in the audit is, I guess I would say, being addressed to some extent by the Corporation Commission in their review of the new rates. The, the recommendation about purchasing the lights was, it's a, it's a kind of long-term idea that can reduce what you end up paying on an annual basis if you can purchase the system. Other cities have done that. No other city that I'm aware of that has Westar as their provider has purchased lights. Around here, Lenexa's purchased lights from, I guess, Ken City Power Light, but no Westar Utilities have bought lights, so.
So the, the cost to operate a streetlight is not only the electricity, but the maintenance of the streetlight, the new bulbs, and, and repair and maintenance where there needs to be.
Yeah. We, we basically pay a lease, we pay a certain amount per pole, and it's all-inclusive. You get the, the light and the pole, and they maintain it, and you pay that amount for.
But are we.
Per pole service charge.
Per pole.
Are we relatively sure we're not being overcharged?
Well, that's what this was started, based on lights being out and not being serviced on a timely basis initially.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, we had, there were some issues with, with some service, I think something like 7% of the lights I looked at were not working, or, it's not the correct term, were burned out.
They weren't on.
Light was not coming down to the street, and that indicates that maybe they're not being maintained at the level you'd, you'd want. I know that they made some improvements in their maintenance practices, so maybe in a better situation now.
Yes, sir.
Just follow up, Westar did hire a company to maintain the streetlights, had a relationship with them for some period of time, they discontinued that, and now they've taken that on. I think it's an area that we need to continue to monitor. We pay on a per pole basis, and it's, and it's regardless of whether the pole is illuminated or not, so we want to make sure that it is illuminated, that it provides that function. One of the issues when we did the analysis that we provided the commission, and we'll make sure that the new commissioners get a, get a link to that analysis, is that if we were to acquire the poles and have Chuck's department and public boards maintain the poles, it's not to buy electricity, we, we don't have an electricity production capability. And Westar indicated that they would require us to meter pretty much every individual pole or set of poles, and that drove up the cost, because they have a per meter charge as well, in addition to the kilowatt charge. And we talked about the possibility of changing that, and that was not something that they were interested in, and that's kind of where we, we, we came to the conclusion, yeah, we evaluated the feasibility and found that it's still something we still want to continue to look at, but it's not something that, given the rules in place right now, looks like it, it makes a lot of sense to pursue.
And the KCPNL, which sold their lights to Lenexa, has a tariff for un-metered but customer-owned lights, and that's, that's an advantage for cities.
Right, right, and Westar does not.
Westar does not have such tariff.
It does not want one. Is that not a state, is that not a state issue then? Yes.
It's, it's within the tariffs, yeah, the KCC can look at.
Wouldn't, wouldn't one community apply to another one? Wouldn't one tariff in a state of Kansas, in a city of Kansas?
The tariffs are by company, so we don't have service from KCPNL available here, so we don't have that option.
Well, I think we know why, that no one has bought these poles, it's too expensive. Do, do we have any idea about whether the charges that we have are the same as the other municipalities have?
They're, they're the same as any customer of Westar, yeah. We're, Lenexa saved, I think, $100,000 when they bought their lights, their costs went down. So if you can negotiate a reasonable price, it's a, it's a worthwhile endeavor. But it's a difficult, because again, they, they're their lights, and the tariff right now is not built to.
Just to quickly add to this information, I know we didn't, yeah, this is a full gen I, we, commissioners, we've got about a little bit over $800,000 budget for streetlight expense this year, so that's quite a bit of money. A, one, one mil is equal to about $853,000, so important, important expense at the city.
No chump change, yeah.
What is, I mean, this seems to be, to be something that we should follow up, I don't think all the information is there for us, and what's the possibility of getting a tariff from the, is it the KCC, is that who?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, what's the process? Is it worth going there and saying, Lenexa has a tariff? How do we apply for a tariff and see what our streetlights are without meters?
They're selling it to us that way now, so it's kind of.
We, yeah, we, we can try, commissioner, and pursue that, I don't, I think we probably have to weigh the cost and the benefit and the likelihood of change.
What, one of the.
Because it hasn't looked like it would, it would easily change.
Well, it certainly wouldn't, if you have to put a meter on every pole, because there's a per meter charge of like 20 bucks or something like that, you know.
Per month.
Yeah, per month, you could never come out, and that's, to me, that's just saying, we got you, and, you know, it's too bad, and you don't have any way out.
And they were going to allow not, it wouldn't be per pole, but it would be enough to where it would not be economical, I mean, there'd be certain strings that they could allow, but not, not enough. I mean, I think it's still something to, to continue to.
Well, I'd be in favor of certainly looking at an alternative, and then we can decide whether to move forward or not, but when you're talking about nearly a million bucks a year, I mean, that's some bucks. I, I don't know what you can save, but it seems to me like there's no way you can save any money if you have to meter every pole, I mean, I think that's ridiculous, because they're not doing it that way now, but that's the way they keep you in the fold, is saying, this is, this is what you got to do.
And I don't want to, hold on, I didn't misspeak. They, they weren't talking about having us meter every pole, but it was enough. They weren't talking about having us meter every pole, but it was enough, there were enough meters and not enough expanse to where we would have to have that. And what we wanted to do was say, let's just evaluate, what's the average streetlight produced for electricity? And come up with a good basis to look at it, come at a policing mechanism to say, okay, we're not going to have people stealing the power from it and all those types of things that they would be concerned about and come up with a rational basis for saying, okay, the average streetlight produces X, charge is X. And that was not something that met with their favor the last time we talked.
And when I did the work, I talked to other communities around the country and this process of negotiating is drawn out. Some of the lessons that they had talked about were, you know, you have a stronger voice if you have several municipalities working together and that the issue of the metering of the lights is a sort of standard difficulty to have to work through. Lenexa, I believe, ended up purchasing their system for something like 20% of what the initial asking price was. It's kind of normal that there's big differences that they work through and it took them years to get that stage. Mike?
Mike, I don't know if this is for you or for Dave, but we on the streetlights in downtown, the cost of electricity on the lights that we have in downtown versus what we have, we're being charged by per pole or however we're paying for it, about the, you know, the Westar owned poles, is there that big of a difference?
They're metered, I think.
Yeah, they are metered. Vice Mayor, I'd have to take a look and see, I don't know.
And they're high efficiency, so they use less electricity.
Oh, well, there you go.
The big cost on the per pole is not the electricity, it's the pole and the fixture. Or that's what most of what you're paying is.
If you make some comparison, they're high efficiency or not.
So it sounds like we want to maybe, yes, Will, we understand where this recommendation stands, but we, I was a part of this, why wouldn't we want to own it to begin with? And I still think that way and I think everyone here sees the value, but the question is, how do we lean on the, to the Regulatory Commission?
I can suggest that we keep it open then, so I don't drop it off the list, that's okay. And I could easily go back and kind of review the work I did and maybe see if there's something easy to update. I can also provide a sort of short summary of what that work found.
Concurrent with Michael's work, but really separate, I think what I'm hearing is you want us to prepare a report as to what would it take to see if the tariff couldn't be altered.
Yeah, and I'm just going to throw this out there, in light of some of the technology recommendations and in light of some of the things that may be happening in the city, it may be to our advantage to own those poles in the future to alleviate some of the issues we may have in servicing our community in other ways. So, it's not something that's going to disappear. I think Michael needs to leave it open. What do you guys think?
I'd say we will.
Okay, sorry, Mike.
No, it's okay.
Well, I don't want to, I just still want to leave it open to get another report in six months and says, we'd like to close it because it's been open for another six months. What I'd like to do is have a report come back and what is the feasibility of getting an FCC tariff? What is the cost and some analysis on, is this a good idea to pursue even to, in greater depth? And then we can say, well, you've got enough stuff here that doesn't look like it's very good or, yeah, it looks pretty good, let's keep pushing on this.
I could do, I could do a little bit of following up on, with the people who I talked to back in, I think this was 2009, see if the other communities have changed. I know Olathe did a little bit of looking at purchasing lights from Westar and I can talk with them, see if they've had any progress. Yeah, and I can maybe write a, again, kind of an informational memo as opposed to a project.
Also, if the key strength in achieving a tariff regulation is to get some other communities together, then if there's someone else looking at it, maybe they want to co-join us and approach the KCC on that. You know, if strength is in numbers, then if there's somebody out there with the same kind of worries, then all it is is a letter, I presume, to start out with.
In Colorado, it was the Colorado Municipal League or something like that that really pushed the issue. So they got, had the strength of a number of municipalities. I don't know if that's...
I would think politics enters into it at some point, but I'm not quite sure.
Okay, so we'll leave that one open, yes?
Don't we have to go through a process? You have to purchase the equipment, you have to purchase the pole and the light and the whole thing. You have to debt service all of that and don't you, we would want to know...
The cost of that.
The cost of the whole deal. Yeah, we did that once.
We had, I think Brian put together the analysis, I don't know, was that six months ago, a year ago? And you all received it and the costs outweighed the benefit. But I think we can go back and look at that, but then I think you also want us to see what can we get in the way of regulatory changes that would reduce some of those costs.
Yeah, it was five months ago or so. It's almost six months and we want to change the price we want to pay and maybe that changes the cost benefit analysis.
Right. And Westar, you know, we had discussions with them, I mean, we don't, they don't have a clear path on how we would evaluate the cost of the poles. So those poles have been around for a while. They've got their own Horizon 2020 and they've been around for a long time. And we don't want to pay the rack rate for those, so we'd have to come up with a method of, I think we've got like 3,000? Is that about right? Can I look around, is that about right?
Sounds about right, okay.
Okay, that's about right.
Michael, did you say that every municipality that's a customer of Westar for streetlights, they all pay exactly the same rate? Or do they have different rates for different communities in the Westar geographical area?
There's two Westar, there's a northern zone, I think, and a southern zone. So, and they're not necessarily exactly the same in the northern and the southern, but if you're in the same zone. So we pay the same as, like Udora probably has the same tariff. Topeka, I think, has the same.
Topeka would be, Udora's got its own electric system. I'm not sure what they're...
Five, yeah, right.
What a deal.
Mayor, do we need a motion to...
I think we'd close them at the end or, we got how many, so we're going to close everything else?
We've still got other parts of the rule.
Yeah, there were six open, or six recommendations that I was suggesting we consider closing. We could close, four of those are the cash ones that have been implemented. One was the solid waste and then one was the power, lights, streetlights. I can keep that one open.
B, C, D, E, F. Yes, so that's B, C, D, E, F we'd be closing and A we would leave open for another six months. Is that a motion?
Yes, it is. One question.
Okay, Mike.
So when did we talk about your new work plan?
I'm going to, I've got, I'm putting together this sort of menu and I'd like to bring it back to you guys relatively soon. I want to meet with each of the newer commissioners and talk a little about my role so they have a clear understanding of kind of what I do. But I would think May, June.
Just so that I can put a plug in it and visit with the city manager, remember this word, sidewalks.
Sidewalks?
There you go.
Okay. I saw a TV story that said that I would be asked to look at sidewalks.
There you go.
It's actually on my list already, but I'll mark it again.
Second, okay, so motion for...
Line, line, striked.
Yes.
I don't know if there was any public comment.
Like crosswalk? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, is there any public comment on our city auditor's work? Sorry. This is the details. All right. Okay, so motions to close city auditors B, C, D, E, and F recommendations by Commissioner Farmer, seconded by Commissioner Shum, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Sidewalks.
Just laying it out there for you.
I've got a book in mind.
What?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to receive the city project update report from the city manager. This is from Corliss talking about all the fun things we have planned.
Will?
Right there.
Got it. Thought we had lost the agenda. Mayor Commissioners, I want to spend just, well, I want to spend several minutes, but I want to be respectful of your time because we can go on this for a lengthy period. Put together, try to keep it on one page, a list of just major items that are out there and try and talk with you all about some of the issues that we have. I do want to spend some time a little bit on our capital plan because I think it is a good refresher of a number of the different projects that are out there and we'll spend some time on that primarily. Obviously, the major issue that we always have in this building is the successful execution of the annual budget. That is our guide, that is what we do. When you see expenses on the agenda, it's because we've got them budgeted, it's because it's an item that falls within the realm of the policies and directions that you have provided. One of the challenges of April elections, in April swearing-ins, is that you catch us right as we are moving into budget season and we're going to be spending a lot of time on that. Primarily, June and July are the major months that commissioners are involved in budget deliberations. We're obviously underway with looking at that and we'll probably be talking here in early May about some of our budget forecasts and some of our items and then when you get to calendar, we do want to see if we can't have a study session where we can talk pretty extensively in regards to the budget. We've also developed a capital plan website that I want to spend some time on, but before we get to that and we've talked a little bit about Horizon 2020, we do have a number of projects that are underway. I'm going to try and relate those back to the capital budget document that you have. Staff is spending quite a bit of time in the implementation requirements for the curbside recycling program that the commission has directed that they be, that we proceed with implementation. There's just a number of items that we've got to start calendaring in order to get that up and running next year. You will see in May, a discussion about the rental registration issue that the commission has talked about in recent months. One of the items that we're also spending a lot of time on is monitoring the activities of the 2013 Kansas Legislature. There are still a number of proposals that could be significant to our fiscal house. There are bills that would realign how equipment is assessed and that could potentially reduce the assessed valuation that communities have, which would be a very dramatic impact on our budget. There are a number of other spending items that are out there that could have an important impact. One of the things that we do in the legislature is we, sometimes we ask for certain bills, certain things to be changed, but it's very much a defensive position, don't harm us. And we're always glad when there's taillights heading out of Topeka because that means the legislature is adjourned and we know what the rules are, we know what the laws are and we can start working to get back to budget and make a number of important decisions in regard to that. So we'll be anxious that they successfully complete their veto session here in a few weeks. We have finalized, the consultant has finalized her report in regards to enhancing broadband service. Diane, Jim Wisdom, Mayor Dever worked in discussions with our consultant, gave you, given you hard copies and we've also now got it linked on the website as well. And then just, there's a lot of internal activities as well, I just gave you an example. We've got an academy for extrovert firefighters and we're in the process of extending offers to probably close to a dozen new police officers. We have overhired over what we have as current vacancies in the police department, knowing that we, the 150 sworn police officers, we get a number of retirements every year and we only want to have an annual academy. So that's just an example of some of the issues that we've got going. Didn't hit every item, didn't try to be exhaustive. What I wanted to do was spend a little bit of time walking you through a number of our capital plans. We have a lot of documents and a lot of guidance that sets out the capital needs for this community and what we try and do is prioritize those capital needs and keep things running and keep things fixed. The major document we have is a multi-year capital improvement plan and if you bring that up, you can see the 2013 projects that are underway. Bob Billings, Parkway, Crestline and Castle, you approved bids on that this evening, similarly for some of the other projects that have recently been authorized, the infrastructure out of farmland, the downtown parking garage addition. We're working with the engineering consultant on the design of the Maple Street pump station project. These are all projects that you will see as they roll through on your agenda and in many cases, we'll have them as regular gen items because there's important policy issues underway. I'm not going to go through every one of these items, I want to just give you all a general flavor for the projects that we have out there. Some of these are multi-year projects. For example, we entered into a inter-local cooperation agreement with Douglas County for improvements to the ECC, the Emergency Communication Center, the dispatch center, the 911 center. We're going to put in close to $3 million in that over three years to be part of the upgrade of their radio infrastructure and tower system around the community. And you see here in 14 where we're continuing to participate in regards to that, we've got a multi-year commitment for the infrastructure out at Rock Chalk Park. $3 million in '13, here another million dollars in 2014. One of the projects that we have under design right now is the improvement of the intersection of 23rd and Iowa. That's going to be a major 2014 project. We'll follow up the work that we've now got on Iowa. Continued work on a number of projects here as well. So we've got it out here in '15, again, you see some of these continuing commitments and then again in '16. One of my responsibilities is to provide you with a recommended budget. I do that somewhere around the 4th of July. I'll be perhaps revising this and probably extending it out another year. And then you will have as one of your budget adoption tasks in July and August to consider whether or not you want to authorize certain projects. As a general rule, we have been able to do about five, five and a half million dollars a year in capital projects and keep our bond and interest mill levy stable. Was it eight mils? We added 1.5 mils for the library project, which was kind of outside of that traditional $5 million, $6 million projects and voters approved that. So that's been able to keep our mill levy stable by roughly having about five to six million dollars worth of debt-backed projects every year. You see here in '16, a couple of projects where we're going to be talking to the Douglas County Commission and I'm going to ask for permission to do that probably here in May or June to be part of their calendar to talk about their participation in improvement of 19th Street adjacent to the fairgrounds, 19th Street all the way out into the farmland property east of Harper. It's an old county section line road, goes by the Humane Society, the fairgrounds. We've got some waterline issues that need attention and that road needs to be built back up to city standards. We also want to be able to provide another access point into the business park. And we want to do it in a way so that it doesn't enhance any cut-through traffic. We also think it's appropriate for Douglas County to participate in the financing of it. If you look at that 2016 CIP plan, you see that we've got intergovernmental aid, which is another way of, meaning we want to tap on somebody else's shoulder to ask for their participation, so. Similarly, we also want to rehabilitate Fire Station Number One at Kentucky and 8th Street. That is a project that needs attention and is something that's small enough that can fit into our capital improvement plan. A new police facility doesn't fit into an annual budget of $5 million a year. Doesn't even really mean something that we could spread out over a couple of years and I'll talk a little bit about that here in a minute. But this gives you an idea. This is the overview of where we want to put our debt projects over the... fit into our capital improvement plan. A new police facility doesn't fit into an annual budget of $5 million a year. Doesn't even really mean something that we could spread out over a couple of years, and I'll talk a little bit about that here in a minute. But this gives you an idea. This is the overview of where we want to put our debt projects over the next few years, and these are all, this is all part of the previously approved capital improvement budget. And we've got a number of commitments that are in place. We've talked a little bit about that, Rock Chalk Park, Dispatch Center. We've signed a grant application for 23rd Street in Iowa. We'll have a formal agreement with KDOT in regards to that as well. We've, you're approved tonight, some unnecessary wetlands work for the 31st Street project where we've signed a cooperation agreement to build 31st Street with KDOT between Haskell and O'Connell. And then we are, we've put in our budget $1 million for participation with KDOT's construction of K-Tan and Bob Billings interchange. We haven't finalized the documents there. We're in some discussions with KDOT in regards to all of our projects, and we're seeing if that doesn't need to be included in that discussion. But we've made a number of commitments in that area as well. That's just really the beginning of some of our capital projects. I'm not going to go through every one, I don't want to, we've got a lot of them here, but I want to hit that as a major item. We also then have some spending plans that show us how we're tracking certain resources. The voters approved a 0.3% infrastructure sales tax in 2008, and Casey is the keeper of this instrument. This is a $45 million, 10-year spending plan where we have tried to prioritize projects to get at some of our street needs and then some of our fire apparatus needs as well. And you can see the layout and the plans in regards to that as well. This is a document that we update somewhat frequently. It'll need to be updated, given some of the bids that we've received on Walkerusa and Bob Billings Parkway and some of those other things as well. It's obviously updated then as we get revenue sources, but we do have a plan for that 0.3% sales tax. The 0.2% and the 0.05% sales tax was to run our transit system, and we'll talk a little bit about that. I probably won't go into as much detail, but that provides operating expense and then some capital and equipment expense for that as well. But you can drill into this, and this is a very important document. The $44 million number is right down here in that spreadsheet, but we do follow through on this document as well. It's a living plan. Chris Farmer, you talked about patchworks to plans. Well, this has got patchworks, but it's an appropriate analogy because we're fixing streets. Iowa was not in this plan as we originally conceived it back in 2008, 2009, but that road was falling apart, and we needed resources in order to get at that project, and we initially had some funds from this that we altered and put into that street based upon that specific need. We've got other street needs that have to be prioritized appropriately as well, whether it's Bob Billings Parkway, Walkerusa, and so on. I hope you will interrupt me as you have questions and comments because I know that this is, most of this is, again, these are all previously approved plans and directions from the commission. The countywide sales tax plan, we've spent a lot of time with this document as we talked about the city commitments in regards to Rock Chalk Park, and this document has been revised as we've looked at that, at that project and as the city commission has authorized it. And you see here in '13 where we get a little bit short of $10 million from the city's share of the countywide 1% sales tax. That money comes, all sales tax money has to touch the general fund. We keep $5 million's worth of that money in the general fund as property tax reduction that follows through on what we told the voters we would do in 1994. We then continue to operate our recreation system with some of this money, operate the city's share of the health building, the community health building there on Main Street out of this fund, and then the rest of it goes to the sales tax reserve fund where we maintain our park system. We pay previously existing debt for the community health building and the golf course, and now we're starting on new commitments in regards to the recreation center at Rock Chalk Park. And you see that budget and how it's set out there. And again, I'll be happy to go into a little detail. We spent quite a bit of time in regards to this document. Obviously, it's a living document as well as we have actuals. We're assuming a 2% growth in sales tax. Some people think that's too much, some people think that's conservative. We did 6% last year. We know that over a 20-year time period, we'll have recessions where we'll have negative growth, it'll go down. So I think we've got, I've got a pretty good comfort level, at least with that number. I won't spend any time on the water and wastewater master plan. I hope to be able to spend a little bit more time, again, with the full commission refreshing you all on that document in May. Won't go through it in maybe as great a detail as we did with the previous commission, but want to make sure that you understand the commitments that we're in the process of making in regards to our water and wastewater utility. Then we also have a capital improvement plan. It's different than the budget. It's a listing of whether, of a number of different capital projects that we presented to the planning commission to ensure that it complies with the comprehensive plan. So those are our major documents that set out a lot of our capital planning needs, but then we also go through and show that we've got a number of other planning documents and capital documents from the different departments. Our fire medical department has a strategic plan that sets out a lot of their desires and their aspirations and their needs, and we look at that and see whether or not we're able to fund some of them. A lot of those items, we're not able to fund, but they at least set out a path and a goal for those. We have been able to get at their fire apparatus, fire apparatus replacement plan. There's a map, takes a couple seconds here to load, that I would encourage you to look at and study, and we have, we update this periodically as well. This shows the location of all of the major fire apparatus. Fire apparatus is a euphemism in the fire medical profession for trucks. And it also shows their age and condition, and then our plan for replacing those vehicles. We try and follow through on that. It's usually a combination of the infrastructure sales tax and city debt to get at those fleet needs. Here on information technology, these, this is what we've added actually today. Jim Wisdom has a fiber projects plan that he has been using and has set out a number of the IT projects that he believes are appropriate for the community, and it provides a pretty good history of what we've done. And then today, we finalized the draft with a consultant of the Community Technology Infrastructure Report, and here's the link to that document. You've got a hard copy of it as well. This will be a May agenda item for you to receive that report from the consultant, so I'm not going to go into that in any great detail. Maintenance plans and equipment plans and parks and recreation. A number of these items, we're not able to fund, so we always have to look at priorities and push things back. Horizon 2020, we just spent a few minutes talking about, this is the memo that mentioned earlier where Scott sets out kind of an overview of the document, its different aspects, and then views about how to approach it, it's refreshing and update. Transportation 2040, I think Commissioner Reardon and I know you're familiar with some of that planning process, Metropolitan Planning Organization, and Christopher Farmer will get more familiar with it as well. The MPO is a separate entity that involves a number of other partners within the Douglas County community and also other transportation agencies. The mayor is on it. Commissioner Shum has also served on it as well, and we just recently have adopted Transportation 2040. It sets out a lot of our transportation needs and forecasts as well. We obviously look at that documented as we set priorities. In regards to our police department, one of the things that I asked Chief Khatib to do when he moved into the chief's office was prepare a general assessment of their needs, and he has done that. Last year, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out what would be a good financial means of trying to get at some of the more substantial items there. And you see a model that Casey put together in regards to that. There's also the facility study there as well. Public Works, we have an airport master plan. You recognize the number of people that have worked hard in a volunteer capacity at our The good news is we have a plan. The discouraging news is that we're not likely to be able to fund a lot of those items. I mean, we've got some, even with federal assistance, and sometimes the federal assistance is very generous, we've had other capital needs in the community that we've decided to pursue, but we do have a listing of priorities as to how to enhance that. We have an annual street maintenance program. The city commission approves it usually in winter, so that we are in good shape to start getting bids here in the spring and get working on a number of our street needs as well. We have a plan in regards to our public works facilities. We really haven't spent a lot of time in recent years talking about those facilities. We've talked a little bit about the police department. We've obviously spent a lot of time on parks and recreation facilities. Sometimes the public works facilities are kind of back of house, we take them for granted. We're probably going to be talking more about those in the months and years to come as we have aging facilities and still a growing community. Got a plan for intelligent transportation systems, which we have been involved in. Stormwater master plan. I was giving my stormwater engineer a little bit of grief earlier that, I haven't had to hear from him in a couple of years, it hasn't rained very much. It's not true. We've obviously been very active in regards to a lot of maintenance projects as well. I already mentioned the work in regards to the Maple Street pump station. We have a stormwater utility. When you take a look at your water bill, you're paying into that stormwater utility every month. That funds a lot of our maintenance work. It also funds the debt that we've previously issued on stormwater projects. There's a good update here that I would encourage you to take a look at that talks a little bit about what they do and some of the capital projects that we have accomplished. Some of the major capital projects here, 23rd and Ozdale, Alabama there, south of campus, a lot of other projects that need attention in the community, and we're probably not going to be able to get to those larger capital projects until the debt is paid off from the existing stormwater projects here in 2018. Unless there's interest in raising the rates on the stormwater utility, which I haven't pursued.
That'd be the water bill, right?
That would be the water bill.
I think we're done with that one for a while.
We have made a lot of progress in regards to stormwater improvements at a smaller scale where we've been able to use either CDBG funding, sometimes when we're rebuilding roads, we've been able to go in and do a lot of important stormwater improvements. So it's not like we, that we haven't done any of that. We've also done a lot of maintenance projects as well, so I think we're paying good attention to that. The traffic calming project list is another example where we haven't had an independent revenue source to get at these projects, but we have been able to get to them as we have been able to do road projects. And then finally, we have a transit capital plan that Bob Nugent, our transit administrator, has put together, and you see that, just like your own personal vehicle, you occasionally have to trade it in and get a new one. That's one of the same things that we have to do with the vehicles that are out on the streets, more than your personal vehicles and mine, our fleet for our transit system. So we've got a plan for the replacement of the large fixed route vehicles and the paratransit items there as well, where we'll be accessing the voter-approved sales taxes in regards to that. So what I wanted to do was to still keep you awake, but make sure that you had an opportunity to see that we do have capital plans, we are following them, pursuing to the priorities and the directions that you have provided. We spend a lot of time with these various documents. We spend a lot of time looking at them, trying to figure out what we would recommend in regards to the capital expenditures that we would eventually try and see for the community. So I've spent a lot of time talking, I'm happy to respond to questions, directions. Want to make sure that the full commission understood that, that this is how we approach some of our capital needs. Stand for questions and comments.
Mayor, not a question, but comment. Jeremy and Terry and I just recently came through election, there was a couple of the forums where there was questions about, you know, capital improvement planning and, you know, how much of it's being done. One of the things, after being here a couple of years, you'll find out that this is like a planning machine. I mean, you know, they're constantly, you know, thinking out into the future of things that we really need to be looking at. So Dave, I always, I always appreciate the work that staff does and looking at what those future needs may be because, you know, there's no way, you know, that I would be able to have, you know, any understanding of what kind of equipment we may need in a sewer or water plant somewhere down the road. So I appreciate the work and the expertise that we have on our staff here, being able to figure out those things.
I think that was a very nice, somewhat overwhelming, but a very nice and really quite understandable review of the capital budget, and I appreciate that, David.
Casey and others on staff really put a lot of work into assembling these documents. I think this will be a valuable tool, not only for staff and the commission, but hopefully for the public as well.
Any questions for David?
Okay, thanks.
I think that concludes our regular agenda items. Any public comment on the city manager's report?
Yeah, my name's Ted Boyle, President, North Lawrence Improvement. There's two things I want to make a comment on. One is the Maple Street pump station. I believe that was to be constructed out of the money, sales tax of '08, and, you know, at that time, when the stormwater study was done over there, that pump was going to cost something like $3.9 million. And today, we're up there five or six million bucks, and we're trying to figure out ways to cut that down and still have it do its job that it's supposed to do. And I believe talking to Chuck and Matt Bond and David, that hopefully this fall, this winter, we can get started on construction on that. The property's already been bought, and hopefully get it completed by the end of '14 because one of these housing developments that's in progress right now would not have happened or happening without this pump being installed by that time because it's in an area, and if you ever go over there to 700 Block of Walnut and look at this, this is the type of development that we don't like in North Lawrence. There's been like 10 feet of fill brought in that area. So that pump is going to have to take care of that stormwater off that development. The other deal I want to talk about, and I heard that there's some renovation or update of Fire Station Number One. Well, I remember when the new fire station was built out at, excuse me, 19th in Iowa, that there was some consideration about a fire station in North Lawrence. Now, I want to tell you, you hear us complaining about not having a grocery store? You haven't heard nothing about complaining about a fire station that we need over there. And the reason we need this over there, a good example- someplace in North Lawrence during the busy hours, traffic hours. Now, that's second-class citizen. That's second-class services that you are giving us. And we don't like it. So this deal, I don't care if it takes one from Fire Station Number One, two minutes to get to North Lawrence, and on a good day and when there's no traffic on the bridge, it takes three minutes. I time them. I live at 310 Elm. I can see everything goes on over here, you know? I can see everything goes on the bridge. When I hear them sirens and they're coming across the bridge, I time them. We had a fire over on the 400 block of Elm. I was the one that called it in. I found the fire burning as I drove on 4th Street. I stopped, called the dispatch, 10 minutes, 10 minutes it took to get, and that was an ambulance got there first. I called it in at about four minutes till 12. At 12 minutes after 12, the ambulance got there and then the fire truck got there. And the excuse was the fire trucks were out somewhere else checking fire extinguishers or some, something like that. So here's the deal. This is going to be the new deal that I'm going to start hammering on.
You've got a few minutes, just a few seconds.
Yeah, I see the Shum clock.
Okay. Just saying. I didn't ring the bell, but I'm just telling you.
That's what that is from now on, is that's a Shum clock.
Okay.
But the deal is, it's a serious deal.
I know.
You might be ho-ha-ha now, but this fire station is a big deal and this bridge is bottleneck to North Lawrence.
I get it. And I'm not laughing at your story, Ted, at all. What I'm laughing at is the Shum clock.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah. So what I want to do is maybe we need to have a separate discussion about that fire service and discuss how that happened. And I want to know what's going on, if there's a problem. So...
Anytime you want to talk about it, I'm available.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Having lived in North Lawrence for 13 years, I have to concur. I had somebody show up on my doorstep at 431 Elm, was where I used to live. He was all bloody and beat up and he wanted in the house. And of course, my husband was working nights, the Journal World. And so I called the police and the police, they were wonderful. They stayed with me online. But the ambulance showed up and it took about 10 minutes. It took over a half an hour for a policeman to show up. And of course, the ambulance couldn't leave until the police showed up. So there's been a real problem with this for some time and I really think it is a good time to talk about it.
Okay. Okay, I don't think we really need to make a motion on receiving your report, so thank you. Okay, how about just public comment of a general nature? Okay, future agenda items, Dave?
No meeting next week. I'll make sure our new commissioners know that there's no meeting next week.
No meeting next week.
Yeah, you guys need a break.
They got to get caught up and read. I expect that whole website memorized. There's a lot of stuff on there. Any Commission items? No? Okay. Anything we need to talk about on the calendar that's...
We had talked, but I don't know that we had finally confirmed study session date, June 4th, starting at 3:30. We'll feed you before we go into a meeting. We try not to have too much of a meeting when we have a lengthy study session, but we've got bills to pay and sometimes we've got planning items and other items that need to proceed. But is June 4th something we can still calendar in?
Okay.
Not hearing any objection? Thank you.
No, I don't think there's any objection there. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Motion moved by Shum, second by Amick, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.